Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Sandra Merman. Representing District Two, Victor Christ. Representing District Three, Les Miller. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing countywide District Five, Ken Hagan. Representing countywide District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing countywide District Seven, Al Higginbotham. The county administrator is Mike Merrill. The county attorney is Chip Fletcher. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning, everyone. I want to welcome you to our Board of County Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, March 7th, and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation from our chaplain, Commissioner Stacy White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Heavenly Father, we pray that you will guide this board, our staff members, and our stakeholders as we make important decisions today. Lord, as I've said before, the devil's in the details, so we do pray that you will help us to open our eyes and look closely at the details of each and every item that we consider today. We pray that you'll open our hearts and minds, and as always, Lord, we are just so thankful for our first responders and members of our military, and we pray that you will touch them with a guiding hand and a loving hand, keep them safe and comfortable, and deliver them home safely each and every day. We ask all of these things in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I have a couple memos to read into the record from Commissioner Pat Kemp. Commissioner Pat Kemp is ill, regret she is unable to attend the Board of County Commissioners meeting this morning. And from Commissioner Ken Hagan, I'll go ahead and read this, though he is here. "Please be advised that due to a previously scheduled family vacation, I will be leaving today's Board of County Commission meeting early." Thank you. So I'll read those into the record and pass those to the clerk. We do have three presentations today, and the first two are actually going to be done together. And I will do those for recognizing St. Joseph Catholic School and Church and recognizing Good morning again. I'm very pleased to do this recognition today because it really highlights the history of our fabulous area and county and city that we live in. We have collectively between St. Joseph School, St. Joseph Church, and the West Tampa Chamber, three centuries that have contributed to the legacy of our community. So I'm just so proud to do these recognitions today, and I couldn't go in January to the West Tampa Chamber lunch, but I understand that historian and retired jurist E.J. Salsinas was the guest speaker, and he shared stories of St. Joseph Catholic School and Church, both over 100 years old. The school is 122, and the church is 115 years old. And the West Tampa Chamber, they recognize them at their 100th anniversary, though they are 105 years old. But I ask the leaders of both the joints today to be honored for serving and continuing to serve the West Tampa community for so many years. Imagine the number of students who have been educated and become important members of our county. The Chamber has grown to 175 members, business and individuals contributing to the growth of Tampa, and we're so proud of what you both do. We'd like to recognize your longevity here in Hillsborough County. And if you all could come forward, we have Alvin Martinez Jr. here from the West Tampa Chamber, and Gil Muniz, who's the president of the Chamber, and from St. Joseph Catholic Church and School, we have Father Nelson, if you'd like to come on up, and Brenda Budd, who is the school principal, and want to welcome you. And I'll read both of these into the record, and I'll start with the West Tampa Chamber of Commerce. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize the West Tampa Chamber of Commerce on the occasion of its centennial anniversary, a milestone in the legacy of service that has helped establish West Tampa as a center of business and historical significance. Founded as the West Tampa Commercial Club by Angel Questa of Questa Ray Cigar, the West Tampa Chamber of Commerce is an innovative organization of businesses, nonprofit groups, and individuals. Through their networking and sharing of resources, members ensure the success and growth of businesses enhance our neighborhoods. A key component of the Chamber's work is preserving the rich history of West Tampa, which at one time was Florida's fifth-largest city before being annexed by the City of Tampa in 1925. The Chamber is instrumental in the newly-formed West Tampa community redevelopment area, holds numerous annual events, including the West Tampa Cleanup Day at McFarland Park. And the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby commend the West Tampa Chamber of Commerce for its 100 years of devoted service and wishes it many more years of continued success. And I'll present this to both of you.
Thank you.
And I'll ask you to speak in just a minute. I want to read St. Joseph's, and then you all can say a few words. St. Joseph Catholic School and Church. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize St. Joseph Catholic School on the occasion of its 122nd anniversary, and St. Joseph Catholic Church on the occasion of its 115th anniversary, two West Tampa institutions that have touched countless lives. Established by the Sisters of the Holy Names in 1896, St. Joseph Catholic School has a long and storied history. From its humble beginnings with 10 students and a converted West Tampa cigar factory, the school provides exceptional education programs to children, molding them into productive residents. The school even operated as a hospital for United States soldiers during the Spanish-American War, and in 1903, a church was built, becoming a focal point for the growing Catholic population of West Tampa. A new church was built in 1965, widening St. Joseph's reach in the community. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby commend St. Joseph Catholic School, St. Joseph Catholic Church for providing educational, spiritual, humanitarian services to the community for well over 100 years, and thanks both for their dedication. Of course, it's signed, both are signed by all seven county commissioners. I'd like to present this and ask if a representative would like to say a few words.
Good morning, and thank you so much for having us out. It's quite an honor, and it's been quite the blessing to be the principal of St. Joseph Catholic School. Together, Father and I lead our church and our school, and we are always doing our best to provide the very best Catholic education to as many children as possible, and to enhance them, and to create citizens that will do and build our West Tampa community, and thank you again.
Yes, I want to thank Commissioner Merman. It was a very unexpected honor at the time when we scheduled our luncheon in January, and also when I approached Principal Budd and Father Nelson to have us on there. But most important, too, was E.J. Salsinas that volunteered to be our guest speaker. He provided a great historical perspective of both the school, the West Tampa Chamber, and the city itself, and I want to, you know, thank all of them for having us there. Now let Alvin say something about the Chamber.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Commissioners, for the recognition today, and anyone that knows anything about West Tampa, you can understand why there's some confusion as to whether the Chamber's been around 100 years or 105 years. It's kind of like the West Tampa way, but we have been around for 105 years and are really proud of our community and glad to be part of Hillsborough County and make another century of contributions to this community as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's fitting that I get the distinct privilege of presenting this proclamation today because I'm a healthcare professional, specifically a pharmacist. We pharmacists are trained to counsel patients on the importance of good nutrition, but we certainly don't have the level of expertise on nutrition that registered dietitians do. So we always encourage certain patients to be under the care of a registered dietitian. And I know firsthand from being a part of the healthcare team that registered dietitians have a tremendous positive impact on the healthcare of our citizens. So at this time, I would like to invite up some of those attending from the Florida Department of Health to join me as I read this proclamation into the record. The proclamation reads, "Whereas food is essential for sustaining life, and the type, quality, and amount of food that individuals consume each day plays a vital role in their overall health and physical fitness. And whereas there is a nationwide need for continuing nutrition education and a concerted effort to improve healthy eating practices. And whereas registered dietitian nutritionists are food and nutrition experts who can translate the science of nutrition into practical solutions for healthy living. And whereas in addition to having college degrees in nutrition, dietetics, public health, or any related field, registered dietitian nutritionists complete an internship and pass a nutrition examination in their respective expertise. And whereas these skilled and accredited professionals work throughout the community in hospitals, schools, public health clinics, nursing homes, fitness centers, the food industry, universities, research, and in private practice. And whereas registered dietitian nutritionists use their experience to help individuals make healthy lifestyle changes and are advocates for advancing the nutritional wellness of people around the world. And whereas National Nutrition Month focuses on the importance of making informed food choices and sound eating and physical activity habits, and Registered Dietitian Nutritionist Day increases awareness of registered dietitian nutritionists as indispensable providers of food and nutrition services. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare March 2018 as National Nutrition Month, and March 14th, 2018, as Registered Dietitian Nutritionist Day in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to recognize the contributions of registered dietitian nutritionists and to become more aware about nutrition to achieve optimum health." It's dated today, signed by all seven commissioners, of course, and we're so pleased to have you all with us and to recognize your incredibly important profession. With that being said, we do have a spokesperson for the group, Jennifer Belleterra, that would like to say a few words.
We just want to take a moment to thank you for recognizing the work of the dietitians of the Florida Department of Health as we work to promote the health of all the people in the state of Florida. We thank you for recognizing National Nutrition Month and Registered Dietitian Day.
Well, thank you so much. I'd love to officially present this to you now and have a photograph.
Okay, thank you, and congratulations to everyone that came for their recognitions today. We will now move to the changes to the agenda. Mr. Merrill?
Yes, good morning. We have three off-the-agenda items that have been added. F4, they're all Commissioner Miller's items. F4 is requesting a draft proposed ordinance on banning assault weapons in the county. F5 is a request for draft ordinance increasing the waiting period for obtaining firearms from three to five days. And F6 is a draft ordinance making it a misdemeanor for anyone to make a threat against a Hillsborough County school. Those were the only items added. Nothing has been removed from the agenda. We have a handful of time certens beginning at 10:00 a.m., public hearing for street lighting districts to approve resolutions for annexing, modifying street lighting services in certain areas of Hillsborough County. At 10:15 is item F3, which is a one-year update presentation on the PACE program. That's Commissioner White's item. 10:30 is a special appearance by Freddie Barton, Safe and Sound, Hillsborough Executive Director, to present their annual report. 10:45 is a presentation on expanding eligibility requirements and services offered through the county's health care plan. 11:00 a.m. is item B3, which is a county audit report on software licensing management. And 11:15 are the three items I mentioned from Commissioner Miller concerning the draft ordinance banning assault weapon sales, increasing the waiting period for obtaining firearms, and making it a misdemeanor to make a threat against a Hillsborough County school. Those are the changes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Merrill. And Board Action on the changes?
What's the changes?
We have motion to approve the changes by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Hagan. Seeing no further discussion, please accord a vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
We're now going to move to the public comment portion of the meeting. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the Board that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the Board members and the public. The Board has set aside a 45-minute period this morning for public comments. People wishing to speak before the Board during this portion of the meeting should have completed the request for public comment form, which actually is input, we need to change this wording, into the computer form located at the sign-up table inside the boardroom entrance. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the Board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Your address is no longer required, and three minutes are allowed for each speaker. And our first speaker for on-the-agenda items is Louis Minardi. After him, Mr. Edgerton. Welcome. Good morning.
Can I pass this out real quick?
Give it to the clerk over there, and they'll pass it out for you.
My name is Louis Minardi. I'm with Yellow Cab Company. I have a request here. When we did the ordinance for the new taxicab draft, the meter rates that were supposed to be put in place, but use this, y'all that sat on the PTC board, Kevin Jackson's intention was to take the luxury taxicab classification out, but set the taxicab rates at the luxury limousine, so it's a little bit higher than the normal taxicab rates that we charge now. The problem is, is when they wrote the mileage thing in there, I sent a letter, or I tried to talk to Paul Johnson about it. Obviously, to me, we both missed the boat. There should be within that language on the $3.50, one-fifth mile, that we left out the one-fifth. So there's a problem there. So Consumer Affairs has gotten wind of it, that the meter doesn't meet the ordinance language, so I sent them a letter about trying to change it, and the response I got was that there was no error and omission concerning the two issues that you had brought up. It was their idea to do the luxury taxi rate, so the proper rate isn't there. If you look at the rates I gave you, I think it's on your page, too, that's what the rates should be. Oh, excuse me, on the second page, if you look at the rates that the county did, they said $3.50 for the first mile or portion thereof, but it should be for the first one-fifth mile.
Okay.
So it's just a typo. We all missed it. It's not, I'm not blaming anybody for it. Somebody missed that language. So they told us, and I know they have a consent agenda item, that they're trying to clarify the scope and some of the exceptions and regulatory processes of the thing. I don't know if that's something that can be added to that or something that can be voted on relatively quick, because, you know, I don't want, they've been very good so far. They're hanging, you know, they have brought up the issue, but there's definitely a typo or there's a mistake in the rate because it's lower than even the existing taxi rate that we had before. So I don't know where we go from here, because that's a resolution. Actually, it's Resolution R17-138 that's part of the ordinance. And from my understanding, the reason they wanted to put it in a resolution, that it was very easy to change the rates, and it's a thing, whatever we need to do. So here I am, I'm making the request that we correct the mistake, and maybe we all meet again and make sure that we don't mess it up again.
And we do have some people, I would like to ask our county attorney first to give us his opinion on this.
Try that again, okay. Was not aware of this specific issue. We are very close to finishing the resolution. You all had asked us to do caps on the number of taxis, and we're just about finished with that. I know there were a number of cleanup items that Paul had identified as part of that, and we've got the item A3, that's the ordinance tweaks as well, but I would just ask that you all give us authority, or we can just do it on our own, I think, with a resolution to just bring that back in the next meeting and get that revised.
Can we pull item A3 off consent and then just have a commissioner just, you know...
You could. That item, though, is just authorizing us to draft ordinance changes, so we still need to bring an instrument back at the next meeting.
Okay.
But if the Board's stated intent is to fix this issue, I think in the two weeks we've got in the interim, we can work through that.
You can get through it.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Well, Mr. Fletcher's answered the question. I think what he said is go ahead and pass A3 and give you the authority to work the next two weeks to bring it back in our next meeting.
Yes, if you could do that. I don't know that we need to amend A3 because that's an ordinance change. If I understood Mr. Minardi correctly, it looks like the belief is it's in the resolution. I've not been briefed on this particular issue. I just, I do know there were a number of cleanup issues that they had identified, and that's why we have A3 on the agenda, and if there's a need to change the resolution, we can do that more quickly.
Okay, thank you. So Commissioner Miller, are you...
I'm not going to pull A3.
No, just make a motion.
And have the opportunity to correct it and bring it back to our next meeting in March.
Okay. So do you need direction and action from us to do that, or you're just going to add it?
If you would like to, you can, but I think we've got authority to just bring back the resolution.
Okay, very good.
It's not like an ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Higginbotham, you're recognized.
Thank you, and it can be addressed easily in a resolution, and that's the right way to go.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Sounds good.
Looks like it's going to get done. Okay, next speaker is Mr. Edgerton, and then Eon Townsend and David Brown.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and honorable members of the Commission, and honorable members of the public. I am H.K. Edgerton, and hail from the beautiful city of Asheville, North Carolina. I am president of Southern Heritage 411. I am a somewhat broken-hearted fan of yours. I am so proud of the things you have done in your city and look forward to attending this evening your diversity advisory council. I am here to really wanted to talk about the Second Amendment and gun control, but I think I'll take that issue up tonight at the advisory council, because I am more concerned about the mental health issues of our children, parenting of our children by the parents. And I don't want to take up your time today to even get into the gun control, because I've looked at some of Commissioner Miller's suggestions, and I am in agreement with some of these, but I do think we have a mental health issue here in our country, not only just here in Florida, but across the country. And I just hope that you will take a very serious look at that before you start making any suggestions about changing the Second Amendment. And God bless you, and thank you so very much for having me in your beautiful city. And I do want to thank your police officers for always making me feel so safe when I come here.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Good to have you here. Eon Townsend, and then David Brown. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairwoman and Commissioners. I thank you for this opportunity to address you all today. My name is Eon Townsend. I own this jacket.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'll remember that from now on.
Everybody does it. I live in Plant City, and I stand before you today as a mother, a grandmother, a nurse practitioner, and most importantly, a voting citizen of this county and state. My husband is an NRA member, and I, like my husband, am a strong supporter of the Second Amendment and believe in the right to bear arms for hunting and self-protection. I'm also a Christian, a Christian who believes that I should honor God and not false idols. My Christian faith has propelled me here and fuels a strong sense, has fueled my strong sense of moral responsibility to speak out here on the issue of gun safety in our county. I am also a strong supporter of safety in our schools and believe our children should be able to go to school without fear. Schools should be places to learn, to feel safe, to feel accepted, to learn the skills of socialization, teamwork, and the three Rs. At least it was the three Rs when I was in school. But sadly, our schools, churches, nightclubs, and movie theaters have become targets where anyone can breach the walls and armed with an assault weapon designed for war and battlefields can kill multiple innocents quicker than anyone can realistically respond, even those who are well-trained. I am asking you today to do three things. First, take into consideration the words of the late Supreme Court Justice Antonin Scalia in the 2008 Heller decision, when he noted that nothing in our opinion should be taken to cast doubt on longstanding prohibitions, all laws forbidding the carrying of firearms in sensitive places such as schools and government buildings, such as this one, or laws imposing conditions and qualifications on the commercial sale of arms. And please take note of the Fourth United States Circuit Court of Appeals decision in Virginia who upheld Maryland's new ban on assault weapons, stating, "We have no power to extend Second Amendment protections to weapons of war," and the language in the Heller explicitly excluded such coverage. Second, I ask you to show not only true leadership and support in assault weapons ban, but also show the moral courage to do the right thing. Not the party line thing or the NRA thing, but the human and compassionate thing. Do the thing you would be proud of when your children and grandchildren ask you, "What did you do to keep me safe?" Third, I ask that you please exercise firmly and loudly your First Amendment rights to free speech and support Commissioner Miller's ban on the sale of assault weapons in Hillsborough on the sale of assault weapons in Hillsborough County, as cited in F4, and please support F5 and F6. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Thank you for coming. David Brown, Jackie Clements Pliskin, and Janie Blumenthal. Good morning.
Good morning. Long time, new see. My name is David Brown. I live in Sun City Center. I am your citizen representative on your Cross Connection and Backflow Control Board. My long-term battle has been against the above-the-ground backflow valves on private property, which homeowners have been forced to install and maintain at great cost, even though the valves are a solution to a problem that simply doesn't exist. You have given me a lot of needed support over the years. You instituted a moratorium on your constituents having to get expensive yearly inspections of the valves. You approved an ordinance requiring underground valves that were to be located in the county's easement. And you approved a program to replace the existing above-the-ground valves with below-the-ground valves. So here I am again to ask you for your behalf, for your help, on behalf of your 34,000 constituents that have those above-the-ground valves, 34,000. I trust that you will happily consent to item A11, to further the financing of the replacement program. As you can see from the documents associated with A11, only one contractor qualified to do the replacing. Based on his replacements per day, it's going to take another 17 years to get the last of your constituents changed out. When I pointed this out to your utilities people, they came up with the idea of a rebate program, similar to the low-flow toilet rebate program. For this rebate program, homeowners could contact, contract with their own plumber to make the change out, and the utilities department would rebate to that plumber the same amount of money being paid to their current contractor per valve. Of course, if the rebate program is going to extend over 17 years, the rebate amount would need to be continually adjusted for prevailing plumbing and inflation rates. So, I would appreciate your helping me again. The plans for the rebate program are moving very, very slowly. So I wonder if you could get out your cattle prods and apply pressure to get the rebate program in place as soon as possible. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Don't see any questions at this time. Thank you very much for coming.
Okay, thank you all.
Good to see you here, Mr. Brown.
Yes. I probably won't see you before the election, so have a good rest of your life.
Jackie Clements Pliskin and Janie Blumenthal. After Jackie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi. Honorable chairwoman and honorable members of the board, my name is Jackie Pliskin. I'm a resident here in Tampa. I am a former teacher, and I am a parent with one daughter at Mitchell Elementary School. I'm also a PTA advocate, and I am a member of, and founding member of a South Tampa Moms Group here. And I'm here today, first of all, to thank Commissioner Les Miller, and thank him for standing up for our children and the safety of everyone, but especially our children. The fact that I have to walk into school every morning to drop my daughter off, and the thought runs through my mind of, what would happen if a gunman came in this building? Where would she go? What room would they go into? What would happen? The fact that every parent, that thought now has to cross our mind every day. And the fact that our government has done nothing. They continue to argue and bicker, take political sides, and nothing is done to create common sense gun regulation. You know, no, I don't think anyone is advocating for taking away everyone's guns. We just want common sense controls to stop these things from happening, to slow it down, to minimize it. Nothing is going to be a perfect fix, but we need to start somewhere. And somewhere is here, and now. And I think there's a lot of momentum on this, and I think people can vote maybe against party lines, because every poll I see shows that the majority of all Americans support common sense gun regulation. And I think everyone is now paying attention. And, you know, it's not just the people on the far right or the far left. Everyone is paying attention. And I would just ask you all here now to consider. I know there's other regions in South Florida counties that are considering similar legislation. And I think maybe you guys could team up and try to do this, and it could be the starting of something. You know, even our legislature are taking baby steps in that direction as well, our state legislature. And I, you know, I just really want you all to take the time now to think about the safety of everyone here and the safety of our children. If there's no one to, you know, if you care about nothing else, the safety of our children, my daughter's six. You know, the fact that people are talking about these things in schools blows my mind. But, you know, we need to take action now as human beings. And if we care about nothing else, we need to care about the safety of them and everyone. So please, continue to support this and don't stop it here. Continue to move forward with this. You know, common sense gun regulation, I think, should be something that should be a non-party issue and something we can agree upon. Statistics show that the less guns in a community, the less, the less people die by gun violence.
Thank you very much. Janie Blumenthal. And then Taylor Ralph and Zulema Ramos.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Jamie Blumenthal. Thank you for having us here and adding this topic to your agenda. I apologize, I'm very nervous. I don't want to be here. I want to be at work, but I can't. I have to be here to speak for all of the children and the people that have been killed in mass shootings. My children were on their phones, texting their friends while they were hiding in the closets. And my other daughter was watching actual live video of the shooting that, while it was going on. I saw children laying in pools of blood. I was very close to it. I knew before even the media knew. Please tell me, what am I supposed to tell my children? You know, after Sandy Hook happened, I thought things would change. After Orlando, I thought things would change. After Las Vegas, I thought things would change. And now after Parkland, I cannot sit at home any longer and wait for another breaking news story about a mass shooting. You are here to represent us, to do what is right for the majority. The majority has spoken on both sides. How many more shootings are we going to sit through and wish we did something, anything, to move forward? To eliminate assault rifles for the general public? How many more times do I have to explain to my children why our country does nothing to fix this problem? Instead, our country teaches my children how to be scared, how to hide, and how to say, "Our prayers are with you." If not now, when? When will we make a difference? You have the ability to make the difference and to move forward and keep this momentum so we don't have to watch the news again on another mass shooting. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for coming. Taylor Ralph, Zulema Ramos, and Phil Walters. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Taylor Ralph, Tampa, Florida. Here to speak about the PACE legislation update you're going to get. But first, just addressing some of the things that were just said. I wonder if there is a connection between the isolation that sprawl has created in our communities to these mental health issues and the dislocation and disconnection from other individuals in our schools. And loss of life is really just the worst of the worst. And we need to really look at how we can design our communities in a way that create people that have more empathy and more connection to other human beings, rather than being disconnected, isolated, and dedicated to having to drive in a car or being bussed around our county, et cetera. So, please think about how that kind of growth strategy also impacts mental health of communities. The PACE legislation that you all are going to get up, I am on the board of the U.S. Green Building Council, Florida. We support PACE legislation. It's being enacted throughout the state. It is not a mandate, it is an opportunity. It is a tool in a toolbox for developers and building owners to utilize a financing mechanism to improve their buildings, not only to create more energy-efficient, water-efficient buildings, but also to harden the buildings so that they're more resilient in the face of natural disasters and other wind-related concerns. On average, lead and green buildings reduce energy use by 24 to 50%, water use by 40%, and construction waste by 70%. Green buildings, point-blank, reduce the impact on our county. They reduce the impact on our landfill. They reduce the impact on our water system. They reduce the amount of water that is, stormwater that is being outflowed into our stormwater system. These are all things that you all care about, because they hit your bottom line, they hit the county's budget. And in limited budget situations like we have, we have to look at how we're investing for our future, not just making the easy, lowest-cost choice, but making the hard decisions that come with a return on investment. Because often, energy efficiency, water efficiency, green buildings do cost more upfront, but they save more money in the long run. And that's what PACE legislation does. It allows the owner to minimize that initial cost while benefiting from the energy efficiency and water efficiency and operational cost savings. That puts more money in their pocket, and that allows them to invest more in our community. So, really look at the return on investment of these situations, on these investments that we're making. And again, PACE is just a tool in a toolbox for building owners and operators in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Zulema Ramos and Phil Walters for on-the-agenda items. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Zulema Ramos, and I represent the Sex Worker Solidarity Network. And it was moved from today to April 4th, but I would just like to ask you all to please consider the lives of low-income workers who are often forced by lack of employment opportunities and unequal access to current employment opportunities to engage in sex work, which is just as legitimate as any other type of work. Do not expand Tampa City Council's bathhouse ordinance county-wide, please. According to the World Health Organization, laws and policies, including ones that criminalize sex work, may increase sex workers' vulnerability to violence. For example, forced rescue and rehabilitation raids by the police in the context of anti-trafficking laws may result in sex workers being evicted from their residences onto the streets, where they may be more exposed to violence. Fear of arrest or harassment by the police may force street-based sex workers to move to locations that are less visible or secure, or pressure them into hurried negotiations with clients that may compromise their ability to assess risks to their own safety. The same organization also outlines five types of violence these workers are most subject to, but I will highlight three. Organized non-state violence. Sex workers may face violence from extortion groups, militias, or rescue groups. State violence, from military personnel, border guards, and prison guards, and most commonly, the police. Criminalization or punitive laws against sex work may provide cover for this violence. Violence by perpetrators at large or in public spaces is the third. In most contexts, the antagonistic relationships with police creates a climate of impunity for crimes against sex workers that may lead them to be targets of violence or other crimes that may become violent, such as theft. Some perpetrators specifically target sex workers to punish them in the name of upholding social morals or to scapegoat them for societal problems, including HIV and other STDs and STIs. Sex workers may also face violence from individuals in a position of power, like nongovernmental organization employers, healthcare providers, bankers, and landlords. There are four strategies this organization recommends, but one is most pertinent, which is reject interventions based on the notion of rescue and rehabilitation, even when ostensibly focused on minors who are not sex workers. Such raids deprive sex workers of their agency, the choice, control, and power to act for themselves, and increases the likelihood that they will experience violence. And the actual, also, human trafficking victims will be criminalized.
Thank you very much.
Phil Walters for on-the-agenda item. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. Couple of comments on the agenda items, this gun ban you're proposing. I just want to say, the catastrophe that happened in South Florida, let's get to the root of it. It's a behavioral issue. Don't blame the inanimate object. It's what's in people's heart. We have an issue. If you want to know the issue we have, drive around, see some of the reactions you get driving our streets. It's behavior we have out there. People have bad hearts. I mean, it's terrible. But it's behavior we need to address, okay? We have deaths out there every day. Hundreds, thousands, driving, texting, dangerous. When you get to our kids, texting and driving, how many does that kill every year? Do we want to address that? Also, behavior from our leadership and our media. You know, taking, what I see, taking advantage of a catastrophe. It's very sad. We're sitting here talking about, y'all are talking about possibly doing something that preempts state law. I hope our county attorney advised y'all on that. I mean, we have a law, our society functions because of laws. Some of them we need to change, some of them we need to follow. And I'll tell you, one of the things y'all could support, and was not done down there, was supporting our laws, following our laws, enforcing our laws. There were laws on the books that possibly could have stopped that shooting down there. That one kid was looked at, what, 37 times by local law enforcement? Never arrested? If he had an arrest record, he wouldn't have had a gun. Maybe we need to enforce those laws. Why wasn't, why weren't those laws enforced? Now, right here in Tampa, I have the opportunity to speak to a lot of law enforcement officers in the course of my daily duties, and they tell me some of the same things are happening up here. We have a lack of our elected officials and appointed folks that want to enforce our laws. My personal experience was right across the street this past summer, where I saw a group, I think they were Anifa and Black Lives Matter, I think it's mainly Anifa, a group bent on the overthrow of the constitutional government of the United States violently, if possible. And they're going through our streets with hoods on their faces. All right, that's against the law. I asked one of the police officers there, "Why isn't there any arrests here?" Because we know if this was in another group, wearing other things over their faces, they would have been arrested. Well, they were told to stand down. And again, that's just my personal experiences. So, we need to enforce the laws on the books. The violent video games. Of course, in my business, I take life every day. It's something you got to do. I don't like doing, I take it very seriously. But these video games, the violence, do you not think these young, impressionable minds are getting ideas of the lack of human sensitivity when they play these things? Maybe you need to look at some of those things. And if we're going to be raising ages up,[1667.02] And if we're going to be raising ages up, maybe we need to look at the voting age, the driving age. Because if you have bad intentions in your heart, we got enough things out there, you can inflict mass damage without using a firearm. But please, act like leaders, do the right thing, and let's enforce the laws on the book. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. We will now move to Off the Agenda Speakers, Ken Wodzinski, Dave McAllister, Mark Rosenwasser. Good morning.
Good morning. I'd like to say good morning to the, okay, wait.
Okay, you can proceed.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Commissioner, and good morning to all the Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ken Wodzinski. I'm a student at St. Petersburg College, pursuing a bachelor's degree in Public Policy Administration under the tutelage of Professor Jeffrey Cronch Knobel. In my last semester of studies, I have a class, it's called Capstone, in which I have to create a project on a subject matter that I'm truly passionate about. So I thought about it, and I enjoy giving back to the community, especially to an organization that helps special needs children and adults, wounded warriors, disabled veterans, military service members, and their families through equine assisted therapy at Quantum Leap Farm. I personally have been attending there for equine assisted therapy for two years now. The therapy has helped me as a wounded warrior, disabled vet. I can personally attest to the benefits of the therapeutic writing and occupational health. It has significantly increased my own personal growth, physical abilities, decreased anxiety, PTSD, and increases cognitive abilities like balance, communication, and focus. So my project entails a, creating a four-step policy analysis on how to plan, organize, and implement a local charity run. So in my case study, there's a four-step process. Identify the issue, the feasibility of planning, organizing, and conducting a charity fund run to benefit children and adults with special needs, wounded veterans, active military, and their family who receive equine assisted therapy at Quantum Leap Farms. Stakeholders would be the community of Hillsborough County. They also service Pinellas County and Pasco County. Other stakeholders would be the people that benefit from these activities, and I don't want to leave out the people that make it possible would be the volunteer staff at Quantum Leap Farms that provide the therapy. Perspectives is increased personal growth, physical abilities, decrease anxiety, increase cognitive skills like balance, focus, or communication. I touch on some of the experts. I talked to April Lott from a running club. She gave me insight as to the running, about running clubs. Ms. Cheryl Bowman from Hillsborough County Land Management, she helped me obtain the Hillsborough County permit for the event. Jenna Miller at Quantum Leap Farms, who, she is my personal occupational health specialist. So my recommendation is to go ahead and conduct this event and raise funds to go ahead and improve the benefits of the equestrian therapy for people.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dave McAllister, Mark Rosenwasser, Beth Veeneman. Good morning, David.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you all? David McAllister. Don't have to say where I'm from anymore, but I'm from Wesley Chapel. As you know, I come here to advocate for an appreciation for local history and veterans, especially that of the War Between the States, and just wanted to update you on some of the recent events and things that are happening. On February 23rd to 25th, up in Dade City in Pasco County, the Augusta Jane Evans-Wilson Chapter had a boutique at the reenactment of a skirmish up there. And I want to show that to you that this is a valuable economic sector, historical tourism, especially in the period of the War Between the States. It does involve firearms, but in a very responsible way, and people like that. Over 800 children were at the school day up there, and they learned about history and about the War Between the States and Florida's participation. On March 3rd, there was Confederate Flag Day. Around the country and here in Florida, the Judah P. Benjamin Camp raised a flag at the place where the Memorial in Eterna Monument used to be, right over here across the road. General Early Camp also held an event at the Big Flag Site out on I-75. And there were other events in Jacksonville, and Pensacola, and all around the state and the nation. This was in commemoration of the date when the First and the Third National Confederate Flags had been adopted. Also happens to be the anniversary of the Battle of Natural Bridge, when Tallahassee was defended against an illegal and unconstitutional invasion. I only wish that you could have banned the Yankees' assault weapons at that time, but that was a different era. On May 5th, Monday, last Monday, the Wilson Chapter and the Benjamin Camp also participated in the Strawberry Festival Parade. H.K. Edgerton was there, and he was out with lots of other civic, we were all out with lots of other civic participants, and even some of you all Commissioners, and lots of candidates for office, from governor to judges, and high school ROTC units, and bands, and we're all part of the community, we're all accepted and respected. Coming up will be the Zephyr Hills Founder's Day Parade and the St. Patrick's Day Parade in Ebor City, which is one of the highlights of our parade year. We'll be having a Diversity Advisory Committee meeting tonight, and we'll be talking about group participation in county-sponsored events. And finally, I just wanted to say, I'm still waiting to hear details about the Race Relations Symposium, which y'all voted for to set up at the request of Reverend Thomas Scott. When's that going to happen? Please let us know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark Rosenwasser, Beth Veeneman, Lois Price. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mark Rosenwasser. I have been an advocate for safe and affordable housing for approximately 35 to 40 years, specifically in the state of Florida. I've been involved with over 250,000 affordable apartment homes in Hillsborough County alone, mostly in the quote-unquote "suitcase city" area, where I've done a lot of work with Commissioner I've been involved at three different levels. In 1990, I was president of the Florida Apartment Association, representing 600,000 apartment homes, many of which are affordable houses. In 1991, I was president of the Bay Area Apartment Association, a local association representing 125,000 apartment homes. And in 2010, I was elected chairman of the Board of the National Apartment Association, an organization representing 37 million apartment homes. And at that time, I took advantage of my position and started an Affordable Housing Committee, which is a standing committee to date. The, I'm here specifically, and there are others who are going to speak as well, about the Sodowsky Trust Fund. Many of you have served on our state legislator, legislator, legislature, and know about the Sodowsky Trust Fund very well. As a licensed real estate broker, licensed real estate property manager, the word "trust" has a different meaning for me than the folks in Tallahassee. The Sodowsky Act, this year, was supposed to, would have raised about $293 million. However, the budget, which was being worked on last night, will reduce that amount to somewhere between $44 and $150 million. $1.3 billion has been raised since 1992, of which less than 20% has gone for its intended I have the opportunity of sitting on the Hillsborough County Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, chaired by Commissioner Higginbottom, and was on a task force to come up with an idea of how to raise additional money. I am not in support of a penny sales tax, I am not in support of a gas tax. I am in support of a tax on those who would miss the money the least. The Doc Stamps.
Thank you. Beth Veeneman, Lois Price, and Bernice Powell Jackson. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much for letting me speak here today. My name is Beth Veeneman, I live in the Citrus Park area of Tampa, and I am a member of HOPE, which is the Hillsborough Organization for Progress and Equality. Everyone deserves a decent place to call home. The county's recommended budget for the current fiscal year stated that the quality of life in Hillsborough County for low and moderate income families is greatly enhanced when families retain or attain access to safe, quality, affordable housing. Yet, last year, in our county, at least 100,000 families spent 50% or more of their income just on housing. Over 74,000 of these families had incomes under $30,000, and these are working families. Rents are high and wages are low. An hourly worker needs to work, needs to make at least $19.50 an hour, or $40,000 a year, just to afford an average two-bedroom apartment that rents for over $1,000 a month. New studio apartments built near downtown are renting for $1,275, so they can't afford that. These families work as preschool teachers, cooks, nurses aides, teachers aides, custodians, cafeteria workers, they work in offices, and landscaping, and restaurants, as waiters, and hotel staff, and entertainment, like at Busch Gardens. Working families struggle day to day just to keep a roof over their heads, and since they spend so much of their income on housing, they must make sacrifices for things like medicine, food, and other essentials, just to have a safe place to live. Thousands of families in Hillsborough County live in overcrowded and substandard housing, with leaking roofs, rusty plumbing, bad electrical, and mold. There is just not enough affordable housing for families and seniors with low incomes in our county. We need you to tackle our housing crisis. We ask for your leadership, using your authority as the Board of County Commissioners, to dedicate local, public funding that's recurring, to create new housing and to rehab old housing that's affordable for working families and seniors with low income. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Lois Price, and then, we have reached our 45 minutes after Lois, and we'll have the rest of the speakers, will be able to speak at the end of the agenda. Thank you.
In that case, may I cede to Pastor Reverend?
Absolutely. Is this Bernice? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Reverend Bernice Powell Jackson. I'm pastor of First United Church of Tampa and vice president of HOPE. We have members of eight of our 24 congregations here this morning. Everyone deserves a decent place to call home. You've heard the need, you've seen the data, you've heard what can be done, and now it's time to act. For four years, the HOPE organization has asked for your leadership to tackle the need for more decent and safe, affordable housing for working families and seniors in our community. In May 2016, you gave HOPE time on your agenda to present a viable solution to the existing housing crisis. We asked you to establish a Hillsborough Affordable Housing Trust Fund with local, dedicated, public funding of $10 million a year to build and rehab decent housing. $10 million is just 3,000ths of the county's $5 billion budget, and it will leverage other public and private monies. We presented research of four viable revenue sources: a small percentage of a public service tax, payment in lieu of franchises' fees, revenues from code violations and/or ad valorem tax. You can dedicate a small percentage of any one or a combination of them for $10 million. But you didn't act then. In August 2016, the county's five-year consolidated plan confirmed a serious housing problem. It recommended the use of local funding sources to supplement others because the need is urgent. In February 2017, this board directed your Affordable Housing Advisory Board to look at the viability of creating a local Affordable Housing Trust Fund, review potential funding sources, and make a recommendation to you, including one or more funding sources, and to bring it back to you in time for consideration in last year's budget cycle. In March 2017, a year ago, the Ahab had a special meeting with county budget staff to identify potential funding sources. On April 3rd, they approved the recommending two new funding sources to generate at least $10 million annually for affordable housing. These funding recommendations for Ahab were presented at your July 19th meeting as part of your staff report. And yet, while we hear plans to invest tens of millions, perhaps hundreds of millions of dollars in a new Ray Stadium, there is no commitment to expand local funding in this year's budget to tackle the obvious and growing basic need for decent and safe, affordable housing to those who would work at such a stadium, or any other low-wage job that we have in our service economy. We would like to invite all of the members of the Board of County Commissioners to attend our NEMI action on April 16.
Thank you very much. And the rest of the speakers will be at the end of our regular agenda. I now need a motion to approve consent. Motion by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner White and Crist. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote. Yes, ma'am, if you're signed up. We allow 45 minutes in public comment, and whoever has not been called on, they will be at the end of our agenda.
Oh, I got you. So I have to wait until that?
At the end of our agenda. Yes, thank you.
Motion carried 5 to 0.
Okay, Mr. Merrill.
All right, our first item is our 10 a.m. public hearing, that's item D1.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Lyons, Public Works Department. Commissioners, we're asking you to conduct a public hearing this morning and requesting that you approve the addition of six new street lighting areas, upgrade two street lighting areas, and partially dissolve one street lighting area. This request is authorized by Ordinance 17-17. The modifications have met all the requirements of the Hillsborough County Consolidated Street Lighting Special Purpose District, and the public hearing was duly advertised in the Tampa Bay Times in accordance with the statutes on February 7th, 14th, 21st, and 28th.
Thank you for that explanation. I see no questions. We will now move the public hearing for this item D1. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of item D1? Please come forward. Yes, yeah, you did, you signed up for D1.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct, that's right. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Eric Si. I live in 1886 Devil's Drive in Clearwater, Florida. I'm a student of Public Policy Administration at St. Petersburg College, and as a part of my course curriculum this semester, I'm required to attend a city council or county Commissioners meeting and speak on an agenda item. Today, I would like to address Agenda Item D1, a public hearing to establish, upgrade, and partially dissolve a street lighting special purpose district. So what is a special lighting, what is a streetlight special purpose district? Well, prior to reading this item, I, like most people, assume street lighting is automatically provided, something that most people take for granted. Street lighting special purpose district will allow for uniform and continuous lighting within a certain area to increase visibility, potentially increase vehicular and pedestrian traffic, and with the correct lighting, increase the appeal to a designated area. During, currently, there are 782 lighting districts within Hillsborough County. Neighborhood streets, neighborhood streetlights in unincorporated area are paved through, by the property owners, through a separate Hillsborough County Consolidated Street Light Special Purpose District assessment on their property tax, or assessed with the homeowners' fees, homeowners' association assessment. To establish a streetlight special purpose district, a resident or organization known as a petitioner must contact Public Works. And at the request of the county, TCO will conduct a lighting plan. Next, the county will send a map showing the boundaries of the proposed lighting area, approximate cost, a copy of the proposed lighting plan, and petition, petition to the petitioner. This petition must circulate among the citizens within the boundary of the proposed area, acquiring at least 50% of the property owner's consent, and at least 70% to upgrade the special lighting district. On this agenda, there are six areas to establish, two areas to upgrade, and one partially dissolved of being absorbed by the homeowners' association. That's meant a fiscal year for 2019, revenues for the new district is $74,000, which will be funded via non-ad valorem property tax, allowing Hillsborough County Consolidated Street Light Special District to remain self-sufficient. I support the annexation and the modification of streetlight service areas to Hillsborough County Consolidated Street Light Special Purpose District for 2018. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to speak here today.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of item D1? Anyone to speak, yes, please come forward. Thank you. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Carol Schaller, and I live at 11305 Callaway Pond Drive, and we have been fighting to get into the appropriate lighting district for approximately five years. Back six months ago, we attended this meeting and got the assistance of Mr. Lyons and his staff in order to right a wrong, which has gone on for a while, and just wanted to say thank you to everybody who has helped us right this wrong, and we appreciate the efforts that you have given to us. Thank you much.
Well, great. Thank you to our staff who worked very hard to help work out these situations. Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of item D1? Anyone opposed to item D1? Okay, we'll now close the public hearing. Board action?
Move the item?
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Crist to approve item D1. Seeing no questions or discussions, please record your vote. Seeing no questions or discussions, please record your vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
Commissioners, our presenters are here for our ten fifteen time cert, and if you want to waive the rules and take the vote.
Okay, we have motion to waive the rules to take up item F3 at ten fifteen by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Please record your vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
Okay, Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to invite the folks from the PACE program to come out and give us a one-year update, so at this time, I'd like to introduce Devesh Nermal and Kate Westner to come to the podium for an update. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much, Commissioner White, for sponsoring this item, and for the leadership of the entire commission, including the chair, for bringing PACE alive here in the county. I believe there's a presentation that's queued up with this.
Have you got something?
Do you have a PowerPoint?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay, they can help you queue that up.
Yes, they will.
That one right there? So just a little note, I mean, I grew up in Hillsborough County. I grew up in Brandon, and I've had a passion for sustainability and sustainable economic development all my life. I studied that. I've been to different parts of the country, and it's with great pleasure having returned to this county a few years ago to be able to see the leadership and innovation around this issue, especially for Florida, and how PACE is enabling important improvements for properties in Florida. And also, it gives me great satisfaction to start off today. Let me, my colleague Kate's here. Kate Westner is our state director.
Hello. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for the opportunity to update you today.
And we'll both be answering questions as they come up. But the pleasure I have today is to say, this title slide is not just any title slide, because everything we spell out in here, we actually have results to speak to it, tangible results. And so that's a great feeling to have that ability in a public-private partnership, and the way that PACE has worked, to see that result. Let me move ahead here. There we go. So I just want to quickly review the promise of PACE. What was the intention of PACE, and then talk about the results here in Hillsborough County. The financial benefits, to remove the upfront cost barrier, provide a hundred percent financing, and do this all with private capital. And to do it in a way that allows affordable payments, because we look at the long-term viability of products and their useful life. And finally, to really see how we can affect utility bills and insurance premiums, which, as we know, we have quite a bit of a constraint on the insurance market with our windstorms, and this is one way to accelerate us to a better place as a community and at the property As far as the environmental benefits, which I know most counties and cities in Florida have some sort of focus on this, I know that the county's been a leader on this as well, we're talking about quantitative improvements we can talk about for clean energy, for resiliency, and of course, overall sustainability. Efficiency, we know, touches our energy bills, but also helps us be more energy independent. And as I mentioned, the hurricane prevention for storm events and wind disasters is really a key piece of PACE's wheelhouse. Furthermore, consumer protections. What differentiates PACE from the marketplace and the public trust and the public benefit that goes with PACE? You know, we can go into details, but I just want to quickly review. This is the overall reason why a lot of what you see in Hillsborough County versus other surrounding communities is different when people use PACE. Product performance requirements, contractor management, contractor requirements, fair pricing, permitting. A key piece is funding only after the borrower's signed off, and we provide that funding. No money exchanges hands between the property owner and the contractor. And finally, senior, well, now what is full protection for all property owners, they get a confirmed terms call. And finally, also, we have the state statute that sort of limits the leveraging that's allowed with PACE overall. Just as an example, this is an example of a product list, so you know, if you use a credit card, or you happen to use a bank loan, you may not see this type of oversight. We're trying to make sure that the right type of products are installed that have a high-performance dividend. In this case, when you look at wind mitigation, everything we do is tied to the wind mitigation credits that you should be able to receive on your insurance premiums. When it comes to efficiency, you know, we talk about HVAC, we talk about having the right solution complete, so you don't just get a replacement HVAC, you may get your duck work done as well. That's a good example of, and you'll see in Hillsborough County, it's pretty unique, the breakout of my products, I'll get to that in a minute. So as far as the promise is delivered, let me get right into the results. This is overall, this is a couple of months outdated in Florida. You can see a lot of wind mitigation, hurricane protection, that's because a lot of the communities that opted into PACE early were on the coast and were in those high wind zones. HVAC closed second, a bit of solar and energy efficiency, you'll see a different footprint for Hillsborough in a minute, and that's probably the geography of the county. Some of the benefits that come out of this, economic development, of course, energy generation, emissions avoided. We have an updated version of this, too, we can provide to the county at a later date. Finally, this is Hillsborough County from March of last year, which was probably a late start in March, to end of February. As you can see, the thirty-four percent, still a lot of wind resistance measures, we have other efficiency, but the other big category is HVAC, which is thirty-one percent. And I expected to see that, knowing our geography in the county. But basically, five hundred and sixty projects, this is at the residential level, there's been no commercial yet, we expect that will happen down the road. Economic development, so you know, we talk about all the different benefits. Typically, the calculation we use for estimates is that every one million of spending should yield fifteen new jobs. We were able to validate this in Charlotte County, where we had exactly even one million of level of projects, we reached out to the contractors, and we were able to see that they actually did hire fifteen new employees. So that was, that's pretty awesome to see that. And so what's going on in terms of the feedback we're getting in Hillsborough County from the actual property owners? Here's two testimonials for you. You can see that somebody here talked about getting their roof done right before IRMA, very critical timing on that. And that's a roof that's done in a way that's going to make sure that home is protected from the storm, saving two hundred dollars a year on home insurance and the electric bills. A lot of our wind mitigation stuff also has benefits for energy efficiency, by the way. Another one talks about energy bills, and here's an actual case study we're working on. This is Valrico area in eastern Hillsborough County. This individual is, we were able to finance the inspection for their wind mitigation into the project, and they were quickly able to get a quote from their insurance company. They're now saving twenty-five percent, roughly six hundred bucks on the premium annually. I have some other case studies which you probably have seen, we can, but I'm happy to take some questions. Here's some from around the state. We will have more of these from our region over the next year, we should have those developed. But I'm happy to share with you, and you have a copy of this, so just a few other case studies here. Happy to take any questions. Kate, do you have any comments?
Okay, I don't see questions on the board. Commissioner White, would you like to add any further comments?
Well, I do want to thank you again for the presentation. When I introduced you, I didn't quite properly state that you're here to talk about the PACE program, but that you're with Y-Green Energy, and I appreciate you being here. I do have a few questions for you. For the first question, I think you touched on this somewhat in your slides, but tell us a bit more about some of the reasons that a property owner might choose PACE versus other home improvement financing mechanisms.
Sure. So it might be a situation where they, you know, it might be a credit score that they, all they could qualify for is a very high interest rate, lender of last resort. We've had that situation before. Furthermore, maybe they want to get the, they want to get the high efficiency, they want to be able to do the right thing for the long term. They, as one of our case studies I mentioned, they feel safer when they don't have to handle the money with the contractor. The whole oversight process has been also something that we've gotten feedback on. Yeah, so that's part of that, yeah.
Very good. And how would a property owner, whether that be residential, commercial, or even a nonprofit, find out about the availability of PACE?
The primary channel has been through the contractor network. Typically, when people call for a quote, if that contractor is using PACE through us or any of the other providers, they could have, by the way, just so you know, that there's multiple providers that you approved, we're one of them, and a contractor could actually be on one or more programs. You know, some counties and cities have done workshops where we've gone out and spoken about PACE, and we're happy to do anything to support further awareness of this, but typically, that is the primary channel, and those contractors do their own marketing. And if you have a website, if you want to post anything with links to the programs, you can do that as well, so.
Great. And the final question, and again, I think you touched on this somewhat in your slides, but you know, let's say in the middle of the summer, someone has a broken AC, maybe a leaky roof. Tell us a bit more about how you help them to get to the right solution for the issue, how you can protect the consumer against things like price gouging and other potential unfavorable outcomes.
Absolutely. Yeah, so you know, the key thing here is, in those dire emergency situations, folks want to get a fix right away. So PACE can do that. We can qualify, we know going into the property, does this person meet the minimum criteria to qualify? Once that's done, you know, they're able to get multiple quotes, they're able to understand that they may need, like I said, an example of HVAC, duck work and HVAC done. We can ensure that they can get both of those done with permitting, and with the oversight, as I mentioned, not to have any cash exchange between them and the contractor.
Well, as I said before, when this was first introduced, it sounds like a great program. I appreciate everything that you guys are doing to implement it here in Hillsborough County, and really appreciate you being here today.
Thank you so much. Happy to help.
Thank you, and we do have a couple of Commissioners that have some questions. Commissioner Higginbotham, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, and glad to have you here making a presentation. What is or who is Eco Northwest?
That's a research group that does the energy and economic analysis on estimates of savings.
Okay, and Y-Green, tell me a little more about them.
Sure. Y-Green Energy Fund is a third-party administrator for the Clean Energy Green Corridor PACE District, which is made up of local governments, which you all are a member of. And so the original members that created that non-ad valorem taxing authority did an RFP in the very beginning of this, you know, after it was passed in 2010, and they selected Y-Green as their third-party administrator to provide the private capital for this program.
And I like, the testimonies are always helpful and heartwarming. What kind of audits have been done to document or footnotes with the success that you're?
With the property owners?
With the property owners, and also the claims of the savings that we're seeing. And what kind of spurred my thought is, when I looked at the a million dollars equals fifteen new jobs, we're all, in the Tampa Bay area, we're a little sensitive right now to job creation and what it is linked to, but I started wondering, well, how are you documenting these claims that you're making here at the?
Sure, so the property owner savings, those estimates are provided by the property owners individually, so they provide that information to us, either based on surveys that they complete or contacts with our staff. And then in terms of jobs created, the same thing, it's surveys with the contractors that operate in the local areas, and as well as our communications with them. So if you'd like us to follow up with you on some hard numbers for Hillsborough, we will do our best to get that to you, just give us some time.
Yeah, because I'm, would you, right now, do you have any audits to fall back on, or any documentation?
I would have to get back to you. They may have something internally in corporate that they're doing that I'm not aware of, so I can respond to that.
I'd be curious to what kind of documentation you have to back up the claims and reductions in savings, because I want this to be a successful.
We will provide you a thorough response on how we calculate that, the formula used to come up with those numbers.
Is it something you could get to us today or this week?
Potentially, yes, on the savings. I think we can get that to you, yes.
Okay, and that, and maybe my colleagues would like to see that back up.
Oh, absolutely. I, and I would add to your comments. Thank you for bringing that up, because I was the Commissioner that brought the PACE program forward to the commission, and there were a lot of questions. I mean, it's a new program, and there have been, you all know those allegations against other companies that are in the market, yet I think you've got a great track record, I think you're honest, you're doing the right thing. But the one thing that's great about our contract with you is that, and Bonnie Weiss is here, we don't have any financial involvement in it at all. So we're not, we are not taking any risk here at the county, but we're providing a conduit to the homeowner to really help them make a choice if they want to engage in it.
And I recognize that value, but reputations can be lost with the slip of the lip if something is not accurate, and I just want to make sure that as you're making these claims, that you've got them footnoted.
Yes.
And the Commissioners here, and other, whether they're elected officials or people who are assisting with this project, they don't get burned in the process, because I don't want to get burned by it.
Absolutely. Can I just clarify? So all the providers and all the legislation that has happened in Florida with PACE at the local government level, there's typically reporting requirements, and we do quarterly reports.
Good.
And those reports are based on estimates that are industry and accepted across the nation. Now, what's going on is, I think what Kate was alluding to, is we are actually going in when we can, and we do case studies, and we have other surveys, to verify this empirically. But as you know, it's hard to say, if I get a new HVAC system, maybe my old system wasn't working right, and all of a sudden, I put a new one in, I'm actually using it, I'm actually consuming energy now. So the variability, and I think there is a case for, to do audits at a portion level in corporate, and we are all trying to be improving what we do, but the job number I gave you is, well, my colleague in Fort Myers did verify with contractors, we wanted to see how close we were to the estimate, and we actually hit it right on the nail. I don't say that'll happen everywhere, but that's, that actually was a verified.
Okay, so that's just in one look, one?
One county, yes.
Okay, and one last question. There was a comment made during public comments about there's, in using your program, that there's a savings of seventy percent, or a reduction of seventy percent of construction waste. I'd like to know how that number was attained.
Yeah, that was my, I'm also involved in the Green Building Council. Taylor's a great advocate here locally for green building. We don't touch the wayside. PACE statute only allows us to touch energy and wind mitigation.
Okay.
He was just speaking generally about green buildings, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Chris, you're recognized.
I know you touched on this earlier in some of the questions, but I just want to make sure it's very clear. Doesn't the program open the doors and make it easier for seniors and low-income folks to be able to make necessary repairs?
It does allow them to make repairs relative to other options they have. They usually have, if they have a breach, typically, you get a note from the insurance company, we're going to cancel your home, your insurance policy if you don't get your roof fixed, or, and we're going to let your mortgage company know. What happens then is their policy premiums go up dramatically. So the question is, what are their options at that point in time? PACE is an option, it qualifies them by equity, and you know, the idea is that there's a performance improvement here that's going to help them pay that, so.
And doesn't it also open the door for improving energy efficiency, which could lower monthly operating costs?
Just like the insurance, yes. Whatever we do is going to help lower, and typically, you'll see that a good roof also is energy efficient in the sense that it provides a sealed envelope, so, yeah.
So it would be reasonable to say that PACE is another option, another tool in the toolbox for someone who may not necessarily have the cash equity, or the cash available, and could tap into their equity to make necessary changes to their home?
Correct, within the confines of the limited leverage we have to the state statute of maximum value of the project amount, which is limited.
Within the safety net that the state has provided through legislation.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, great. I really, I hope that, you know, you're very successful, because I do think this is a great option for people. Commissioner White, would you like to make a motion to receive the report?
Yes, I'll move to receive the report.
Okay, motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Chris. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Thank you for your leadership on this, okay.
Thank you all very, very much.
Motion carried four to one. Commissioner Higginbotham voted no.
Commissioner Higginbotham?
I just wanted to get the backup footnote of numbers.
Okay.
Okay, and that's not even?
It's not a real negative vote, it's just, you want more information. Okay, thank you. Mr. Merrill?
Yes, next item is your ten thirty time cert. Special appearance by Freddie Barton of Safe and Sound to give their annual report.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, Freddie Barton, Executive Director for Safe and Sound Hillsborough. Want to thank you for allowing us to come before you today. I have with me our Chair, the public defender Julian Holt, our Vice Chair, Chief of Police for Temple Terrace, Kenneth Albano, and Court Administrator Gina Justice, and we'll probably hear from them after the presentation. I'd like to start by greeting you with a phrase, "Gosseerian and Jerry," and I'll explain that greeting at the ending of the presentation. I know that right now, this commission is tasked with a lot, you have a lot You have a lot on you, and this community is looking to you for leadership. There are a lot of things that we're focusing on and asking the question, what's going wrong? What do we need to fix? What's working? What's not? But I want to focus this presentation on the things that are working here in Hillsborough County through the efforts of Safe and Sound Hillsborough and the partners that come to the table. Thank you to this county commission for supporting Safe and Sound. Thank you for Commissioner Miller to serve as the representative. And before you, you have the annual report. We heard you loud and clear, Commissioners Miller and Christ, that you wanted to see some outcomes. We want you to know that we did develop those outcomes, and we have met all of our outcomes to date. I'm going to highlight several of them and then talk about some next steps as we look at moving into our fourth and fifth year. The vision of Safe and Sound Hillsborough, again, is working together to build strong families, safe schools, and healthy neighborhoods. Again, as we look at what's happening in our nation and also what's happening in our local area, we have to ask the question, how do we continue to work together to achieve our goal of reducing and preventing violence in our community? We focus on these core values, that violence is preventable. We know that we've been trying to stop violence ever since Cain killed Abel. However, we can look at preventing some of the contributing factors of violence. We want to address the gaps to ensure all children and youth have nurturing and support of families and communities, to build on the strengths of youth, families, professionals, and community, promote value of equity, and ensure equal opportunities, and also focusing on those most at risk. Those are our youth, and those are those with other contributing factors. We also wanted to remind you that we follow the public health approach, where we want to look at focusing on upstream issues versus looking at downstream. We can't arrest ourselves out of this problem. We can't be reactionary. We must be proactive in our approach at reducing violence and looking at long-term effects, looking to see over not just three to five years, but eight and 10 years, what happens from this 10-year period if this 10, 11, or 12-year-old, has that individual gone off to college, achieved a job, is now providing for their family, and is not into the criminal justice system? Over a 10-year period, do we see infrastructure improving? Do we see the economic base improving? Do we see mental health improving? And do we see the overall health of our communities improving? In order to answer those questions, we must treat this as the disease it is and look at the symptomatic factors. We do that by focusing on four major strategic goals. Improving the health and well-being of families by focusing on mental health first aid, substance abuse, domestic violence, reentry, family support services. Creating cultivating communities by engaging residents, getting the residents trained in leadership development, connecting them to resources. It's not that resources aren't available in our communities. It's making sure that people have access to those resources. Improving neighborhood conditions, such as increasing social programming, making sure we have out-of-school time opportunities for our kids, making sure that we increase access to physical spaces through parks, and also maximizing impact, coming together, communities, residents, stakeholders, businesses, all together to maximize our impact. In order to do this, we know that Safe and Sound couldn't do it alone. We cannot think that we can create new programs. We've got to attach ourselves to existing programs. So, we revamped our structure. We know that we wanted to focus, right now, in our pilot phase, on four target areas: East Tampa, the university area, Plant City, and South County. Yes, Commissioner Merman, we have started working in Ruskin. Yes, Commissioner Merman, we have started working in NYMMA. Yes, Commissioner Merman, we will continue to do those things in the southern part of the county. We also know that by moving to this new structure, we have worked with our community quarterbacks, such as the Improvement League of Plant City and the University Area CDC, wholesome communities down in South County, and the CDC of Tampa. By making sure we follow that model as we expand to different areas, such as West Tampa and Temple Terrace, we are able to build those community advisory groups to provide them with resources and technical assistance, so that they're not left holding the bag. They're trained to carry out some of our initiatives. So, we revamped our structure a little bit, so that we can expand our reach and not just try to do everything ourselves. So, what has been done? We know that there's a lot, there are a lot of questions on what can be done, but there are some things that we've been able to do with the limited amount of resources and the time that we've been putting this together. Over the last year, we've had, through our Youth Mock Trials Program to address gun violence, we've had five mock trials throughout Hillsborough County, engaging 128 youth, and educating them on what happens, not if they're necessarily the person who is the shooter, but what happens if you're just with someone with a gun and you feel it's okay to walk with that person who has a gun. And we educate them on the criminal justice system in an effort to let them understand the repercussions of their actions. To date, out of 128 youth, we've had a 100% success rate with our youth completing the mock trial programs, and 100% of the youth saying that they want to go through it again and also refer one of their friends or family members to participate. In the youth mock trial programs, we simply talk about gun violence. We look at accessibility of guns. We look at willingness to talk to law enforcement if a youth finds out something that's happening in their community. We've been able to change perceptions from our youth, seeing that 78, going from 78% of kids saying that they would go with someone or walk with someone to a gun, down to 36%. So, we're starting to see the small needle change. We know that in order to work on reduction of violence, you have to look at economic power. We have to look at workforce development. So, we partnered with the Improvement League of Plant City. We partnered with the Plant City EDC and the Plant City Chamber of Commerce to launch a Plant City Jobs Initiative. And through that initiative, we've seen 21 individuals to get jobs, get employed in Plant City, and the total salaries and benefits to be in the neighborhood of $765,000. No, Commissioner Higginbotham, we're not taking credit for all of those by ourselves. That is a partnership with several agencies that are working together to get individuals employed in Plant City. Addressing financial literacy, Regions Bank has partnered with us to provide financial literacy camps for youth, and as they complete those camps, Regions Bank sets them up with initial savings account. The interesting thing, even though we only did a test of 10 students, the 10s, out of the 10 students, four of them told us that their parents did not have a bank account. So, this was the actual first bank account in their family, and so, we know that we have to swim upstream, work with our youth. Mental health has to be brought to the forefront of every conversation when we're talking about safety. Partnering with the Crisis Center, partnering with some of our faith-based leaders, over the last year, we have gotten 40 individuals trained as mental health first aid certified individuals. We have to work on expanding that number, because as we try to work on this issue of understanding mental health, we still know that there is a lot that we do not know. So, we need to focus our energy, and you're going to see us push that conversation to the forefront of every narrative. Through our Hillsborough Speaks Initiative, we've partnered, we've had four sessions. We've partnered with Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, Tampa Police Department, Plant City Police Department, as well as the City of Temple Terrace through their police department, to bring residents and law enforcement officers together to talk about the issues surrounding race, stigma, perception, implicit and explicit bias. And we've received overwhelming feedback that that program is working very well at breaking down barriers and silos. And then, through some of our youth programs, we tried to focus on having at least one youth program every month. So, in the last year, we've had 12 youth programs and engaged 231 new youth in those programs, keeping them safe, making sure that they have something to do when they're out of school, because if we don't find them something to do, they will find something to do. And unfortunately, we may not like what they're doing. We want to focus on, and we have focused on, physical space and physical place. So, partnering with the Parks and Rec Department, we were able to reopen the Kings Forest Recreation Center in the eastern part of Tampa. And through that, we've made an after-school programming site. We have it as a summer programming site, a convening space for folks. I want to give a special thanks to Rick Valdez and his team for making that happen, and the Board of County Commissioners for approving us to do that. We now have over 145 youth that are constantly engaged through sports programs, through mentoring programs, and they have now a place to go. We started working with Kings Forest when we found out that there were nearly 200 youth that live within a two-mile radius of that facility that weren't accessing that physical space. Now, it serves as a safe space. And we've also partnered with the school district, and they've been a huge partner in our Safe and Sound Schools Initiative, where we're bringing violence prevention programs through the Sandy Hook Promise Initiative. We kicked off that very recently with the Start With Hello program. This initiative started with the Sandy Hook shooting, and we found out that we needed to work with all of our partners together. So, having a partner such as the Sandy Hook Promise to come down and working through all the agencies that make up Safe and Sound to launch those programs district-wide with a couple of pilot sites to start, it's huge, and it speaks to the relevancy of what we're doing. Last year, we had our first annual Violence Prevention Conference titled Safe Summit 17. There, we had 250 individuals to attend that conference. We had over 150 youth that attended that conference, and we focused on hearing from our youth as to what does it take to make them feel safe in their community. We can tell you now that that needs to be the same conversation this year. We'll talk about that conference we're having again this year. We had several partners here that are in this room that participated in the planning of that, and we need your help to make sure we get that message out, especially in light of what's happening in our community. The end result, why do we do what we do? Why do we focus on violence prevention? What is the point? What can we think to accomplish in not just five years, but eight years and 10 years? I'd like to show you why we do what we do.
Every day around 6:00 in the morning, people get up to start their day. And every day around 6:00 in the morning, a youth has to make an important decision.
We have to work together to save our youth, protect their future, and prevent the unnecessary violence that happens in our community. Our youth need to know that there are people that are here for them. We got to get them back to the village concept. I can't do it alone, though. I need your help.
We won't tolerate F schools. Our youth need us all. We will work hard, let them know that we care for them above all else. Teaching won't end in the classroom. After-school programming is needed. Volunteerism is needed. The schools can help save lives. Our churches need to come together to work in our community, to bring people together. Doesn't matter your faith. It matters that we love and care for one another.
It's going to take residents, college students, volunteers of all ages to help us all in our fight.
Here in Hillsborough County, we want to prevent our young people from running toward a life of crime, drugs, and violence. It's up to us to be their guardians, to protect them and help them see there is another way, a better way, a better life. We've got to mentor the youth, interact with them in the street, let them know we are here for them. We've got to do more.
We all play a part in reducing violence. We all play a part in protecting our youth. We all play a part in securing our future.
Don't do this. I got you.
To get involved, participate, mentor, it takes a connected village.
Not just one of us, all of us. Teachers, officers, churches, parents.
Help us run the race. We are Safe and Sound Hillsborough.
Every day.
And so, that takes me to our final update. Thank you. Thank you. And so, that as we continue to work together, public agencies, our residents, our youth, our teachers, our preachers, our parents, our grandparents, pseudo-parents, and everyone alike, on May 19th of this year, at Hillsborough High School, we will hold our second Safe Summit 18. We want to make sure that we have at least 350 youth. How do we do that? We're reaching out to our schools. We're reaching out to our churches. How do we make sure that we get the stakeholders involved? It first starts with you helping us to drive that message. We're reaching out through our community quarterbacks to make sure that we bring everyone that can be there, there to the table to have a common sense discussion as to what's the next step in keeping our kids safe. We also want you to know that we've been good stewards of the resources given to us in your annual report, and it was also discussed a few weeks ago. We did have our audit completed by the county attorney, the county auditor's office successfully passed that audit. We made sure that there were no findings, and we're moving forward. So, in your packet that you have before you, you have a note from the county auditor's office, letting you know that even though we know that we're doing a lot, we still want to make sure that we show you that we're good stewards of the resources and the time that you've allowed us to get things done. As I close in, before I bring up our members of our Leadership Council, I greeted you at the very beginning by saying "Cassarian in Jerry." And I want to leave you with this parable. Cassarian in Jerry is a phrase that was used by the Masai tribe in Africa, and no tribe has been highlighted more as a military and economic powerhouse than the Masai tribe. It's interesting to know, though, that no matter who you were and what your stature was in life, whether you were a chief, whether you were a servant, whether you worked in schools, whether you worked on the farm, everyone greeted each other on the level and said "Cassarian in Jerry." And it translates to a simple question, "And how are the children?" And so, it's interesting to know that no matter what their station was in life, the response was always, "And the children are well." And it was simply because no matter how strong they were in their economy, no matter how strong they were in the military base, they all had the same concern at the end of the day, the safety and security of our children. It didn't matter what your station in life was. It didn't matter if you were Democrat, Republican, Independent Party, Tea Party, No Party, Party City, didn't matter who you were. You all had the same concern, and that was to make sure that the children are well. So, as we move forward to our conference this year in May, as we move forward to have these discussions, as we talk about how to push mental health to the forefront, I want to remind you and thank you for your continued support. And I hope that over the years to come, when we are asked the question, "Cassarian in Jerry, and how are the children?", no matter what we decide, we can all say, in the end, we did the best to say, "The children are well." And I thank you for that. And at this time, I'd like to bring up either our Chair or Vice Chair or Mrs. Justice, to just give you some information or feedback based on their participation and their agency's participation as an inter-local partner.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning. I had some prepared statements. I wasn't sure if our Chair was going to be here, but after hearing Freddie speak, I just want to share from the heart. And one thing I want to drive home, not for you, but for everybody that may be in attendance here and may watch this later, is if there is any credit to be had for anything that Safe and Sound accomplishes, it starts right here, because it was the collective wisdom and decisiveness of this Board of County Commissioners that set us in motion under the leadership of Kevin Beckner, then a county commissioner, that helped to establish the Violence Prevention Collaborative that evolved into Safe and Sound Hillsborough. Safe and Sound, and that was back in 2013, almost five years ago. And while the first couple of years, we were putting together policies and procedures and rules and how we were going to function, the last few years, we have certainly gained a lot of traction under the leadership of our Chair, Julie Holt. We have a much greater cohesiveness and focus of our Leadership Council, and everything that we accomplish as Safe and Sound Hillsborough comes right back to these chambers and to each and every one of you, because without your support then, and without your continued support, quite frankly, I don't know that there'll be a Safe and Sound Hillsborough. That being said, Safe and Sound Hillsborough, from our perspective in Temple Terrace, and on behalf of my Mayor, Mel Geraldo, I can assure you that we are 100% supportive of Safe and Sound and will continue to be supportive of Safe and Sound. I sit on the Leadership Council in her stead. So, in Temple Terrace, we don't have one of our target areas per se, but it's not about us having a target area that's important to us. It's about the greater good of those in the county. Our target areas were simply just a place to start, because our expansion of those same type of initiatives to different areas in the county will continue. I heard some mention of down south. The goal is to establish and refine our various services and to connect people. Safe and Sound was never designed by sheer numbers to be the facilitators of everything, of every activity that we're going to hopefully have going on in the county, but rather to be the conduit to connect those leaders, those decision-makers that can make things happen just a little bit quicker. For Temple Terrace, I can tell you, I have benefited extremely from my relationship with the Safe and Sound Hillsborough in that there was an extreme need at Greco. If any of you are familiar, Greco is our only middle school in Temple Terrace, and we have a number of kids from different neighborhoods that come to Greco outside of Temple Terrace. They all come together. There are a lot of them, a huge proportion of them are underserved, and a large percentage of them are on assistance of one type or another. It was because of the relationships formed in Safe and Sound It was because of the relationships formed in Safe and Sound and the support of those Leadership Council members that we were able to get a, a footprint there of a Boys and Girls Club. We've had two successful summer camps. We have now, uh, obtained the support of a naming, founding, uh, donator for Temple Terrace. There's going to be a Boys and Girls Club in Temple Terrace that will serve not just Temple Terrace kids, but county kids that live right in the area of Temple Park, Tampa kids that live right on the border of Temple Terrace and East Tampa. So Safe and Sound Hillsborough has, has a much greater reach than any one objective that we, that we may be able to share with you or any one success. And, and again, all of them, all of them come back to, to this board and your support and your wisdom and, and initiating all of this to begin with. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I don't, Commissioner Miller, I know you're the representative. Do you want to make any comments?
Well, I, I wish I could do 10 more meetings than I do, but my schedule sometimes does not allow me. But let me say this, um, Safe and Sound is just a, a tip of the iceberg of trying to make sure that the children are well. Um, it takes a lot more than Safe and Sound. I wish that they had the umbrella arm to reach out to every segment of this community. But right now, I think it's four areas that we're concentrating on. But there's still work to be done throughout Hillsborough County, whether it's West Tampa you don't touch, uh, New Tampa you don't touch, Carrollwood you don't touch, uh, other parts of this county don't touch. Maybe one day we'll be able to get there. But it's going to take a village, an entire county, to reach those young people to let them know that they're safe. Um, they don't feel safe now. Let's just face the fact, they don't. They don't feel safe. Uh, and I'm gonna get to that later on in the day. But I just want to thank Freddie and, and, and the leadership team and the, and the others that are involved and the work that you do. Um, and the, the conference that's coming up on, in May, if my schedule allows me, I will be there. Uh, but it's, it's that work that you do, it's other work with the Community Law Enforcement Workshops that we have going on collaboratively with you to make these things happen. Um, I wish I had a magic wand to make it happen overnight. We'd have to worry about some of the things we see going on today. But I don't have the magic wand. So just thank you for what you do, uh, work collaboratively with other organizations, and maybe one day we'll get to that point.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, I got, I, I think from my standpoint, and I remember it's really fresh on my mind, the conversation we had at this board, uh, because Sandy Hook was such a, a terrible incident. Now, of course, we have the shootings in Parkland. Uh, but I think, I, I, I just want to ask you, because we need to measure the effect. So like, you know, what changes have really been made since Sandy Hook till now? And how can we see a difference in this community? Because, um, you know, we're, we're all struggle, you know, with all these programs out there. And I think you have the capability of really making that difference because you've got the right people in the room. Uh, but I want you to continue to stress that we have to measure the results of this to be able to tell our community that we're really, uh, keeping people safe and really piggyback on Commissioner Miller's, uh, comments. And, um, I know you all can do it. Um, but let's, let's keep working at it. Uh, thank you for going to South County, uh, because they do have problems with juvenile crime and, um, issues down there. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Murrell?
Yes, so that, uh, takes you to our 10:45 Time Certain, which is a presentation from Gene Early on expanding the eligibility requirements for our county healthcare plan.
Good morning, Gene.
Good morning. I'm Gene Early. I'm the Director for Healthcare Services. Um, and we're going to talk to you today a little bit about the Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan. Um, its importance to the community is an important component in the economy. Provides nearly 100 million to Safety Net and other nonprofit hospitals during 2017 to 2018. It supports hospitals and providers who otherwise would not be paid for the provider's services, contracts with 12 hospitals, 33, 31 primary care clinics and more, and 3,000 participating medical specialties, large groups, and a host of ancillary services. And it provides 3.5 million to Tampa General for their Level One Trauma Center. And it supports, um, many of the non-funded mandates like Baker Act Transports, Medicaid, and the Healthcare Pilot Program. Um, before I go further, I wanted to acknowledge that, uh, Dr. John Curran is here today, um, as well as Dr. Friedman, um, the Healthcare Advisory Board Chairman and the Management Committee. And I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank Commissioner Merman and this board, uh, Mike Murrell, Carl Harness, um, and many mother, others of the executive team for being so supportive of the Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan. It was established in 1991 as a medically indigent healthcare program. It serves Hillsborough County residents generally aged 18 to 64, women at 51%, men 49%. Currently, they qualify at incomes at or below 110% of the federal poverty level, and they do not qualify for any other ser- you know, any other insurance. It served approximately 13,000 members per month, and it projected to be 26,000 unduplicated members in 2018. Um, we serve 260,000 residents in improving the quality of life because of the HCP providers and they're in this program since 2008. It provides most efficient and effective access to comprehensive healthcare, and it's currently celebrating its 25th anniversary. And we have Dave Rogoff representing our Blue Ribbon Panel, um, as well, and several members of the, um, uh, the providers out here, such as TGH. It's implemented and continuing to build upon the Client Information System, and we are currently live. Um, we're working on a portal now for providers and for our, uh, individual clients. We've reduced our cost, um, to $487 per member, per month, and that's about half of the national average. Um, increased eligibility, the last time I was here, incrementally from 100% to 110% of the federal poverty level. And we continue to improve the integration of medical, mental health, substance abuse, and social services. It continues to develop a measurement system to evaluate the clinical and quality of the care. And we've implemented our Healthy Living Program in three sites, Lee Davis, Plant City, and South Sur. Mental health has also been a very important component of this, uh, program. And basically, we've, we've really concentrated on chronic diseases, homeless, depression, and other obstacles in healthcare, and we've kind of tried to eliminate these silos. Uh, homeless individuals needed access to mental healthcare services, and they are getting them. Uh, pilot programs demonstrate as far as the co-location of the behavioral health and the primary care. We reduced 49% referrals to network mental health specialists, uh, which means more of that's being done in the primary care settings, and they're basically, um, very much, uh, well-received in all of the sites. Um, we also did a quick opioid, uh, crisis, and I wanted to thank Commissioner Merman for sponsoring that. Um, it hosted the first-ever Hillsborough County Opioid Summit to bring all the organizations to the table. Um, we had, um, Healthcare Advisory Board and its Mental Health Task Force and public and provider, uh, public and private providers, basically doing some things with an action plan, which we come up next month. And finally, um, the Hillsborough County Healthcare Advisory Board is recommending that we increase the eligibility up to but not including 125% of the federal poverty guidelines, um, including continued use of co-located mental health services. And the recommendations are supported by the Department of Health, U.S. Health, College of Public Health, HCP Network Providers, and the Healthcare Advisory Board. And it's certified by our actuaries and presented as financially sound.
Okay, is that a recommended action?
It is.
From the Healthcare Advisory Board? Okay. Um, I, Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
I was the first to make a motion to
Good.
to accept, uh, the recommendation to the staff. But I have a question for Mr. Early. You said that if the, the poverty level will be raised from 110% to 125%?
Yes, sir.
If we pass that, when does it take effect?
Um, that would take effect April 1st.
Okay.
Maybe April 2nd. Just in case anyone didn't believe me.
It's not April Fool's Day. Um, okay, I just, I want to say a few words about the efforts you all have done. Um, we all know there's a lot of gaps in care still out in the marketplace. Uh, premiums are rising on Obamacare, which didn't, doesn't really reach people till 136, 8% of federal poverty level. This goes up to 125%, which does help close the gap. And just to remind you all, this is something that when people say, what do you do at the county? This is something we can always be proud of. We are a safety net. We are helping the working poor. Even at 125% of federal poverty level, I think that's somebody that's, uh, only making
1,200.
12,000 dollars a
1,200, uh, actually 12,160, so $1,260 is roughly what it is for this.
So it's, it's really addressing a great need in the community. And I just want to congratulate the Healthcare Advisory Board, the Behavioral Health Task Force, um, and that you actually produce outcome measures that we can all be proud of. So, uh, we have motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Chris. Um, on item F2, I see no further discussion or questions, so please record your vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
Thank you, Gene.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, 11:00 AM Time Certain, B3, is the County Audit Report on Software Licensing Management.
Good morning, Commissioners. Heidi Pinner, Director of County Audit. I have one report today. It was report number 343, which was the Software License Management Audit. This, uh, audit looked at both the countywide license management process as well as the departmental processes for licensing management. Uh, we worked in cooperation with the Office of IAO for the audit, so we appreciate their time and cooperation throughout the process. And as always, the testing detail is actually included in the audit report. We did make several recommendations to management, uh, which if implemented, we believe could increase the consistency, uh, increase accountability, reduce the, uh, risk of compliance, or non-compliance, I, rather, for license management process, and also has the potential to reduce some costs associated with non-compliance or redundant software licensing purchases. We've discussed each of the recommendations with management, who have concurred with the recommendations and formed corrective action plans. We'll continue to monitor those corrective action plans as they're implemented. And I'm available for any questions you might have or ask that you receive the report into the record.
Great, thank you very much. A great explanation. We have a motion to receive the report, item B3, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion carried five to zero.
Uh, we have a little bit of time before 11:15 Time Certain. We can either waive the rules and proceed or, pardon me?
Okay. Uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Miller to waive the rules to take, uh, item, uh, F4, F5, and F6. We have a second by Commissioner Higgins-Botham. Uh, seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
Okay, Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When I was in the United States Air Force some time ago, we were trained to use an assault weapon. And that assault weapon was the M16. The M16 was especially a lightweight assault weapon, weighed 7.9 pounds, with a loading magazine, loaded magazine of 30 rounds that we could utilize. We were trained intensely on the M16 because we were in the height of the Vietnam War. And the M16 was the Air Force's weapon of choice. I knew how to utilize the M16. I knew what it was used for. And that was to kill the enemy with as many rounds as I could pump into a weapon, to their bodies. I was never assigned to Vietnam because I was the only surviving son. And back then, if you were the only son in the family, you could not go to a war zone. I think things have changed a little bit right now. But if I had the opportunity, if I had the assignment to go to Viet- to Vietnam, I knew how to use that M16, and I knew what that M16 was for. And that was to kill the enemy. The AR-15 includes the same features that typically have a military weapon to assist soldiers firing many bullets in the short period of time as many be required in a situation where it is counted as large numbers of enemy targets. Large number of enemy targets. One round in the chamber, and normally 20 to 30 rounds in the magazine, the same as the M16. However, there are magazines that hold 40, 90, and 100 rounds that you can put into an AR-15. You could not do that with the M16, but you can do it with a AR-15. Ladies and gentlemen, the two weapons that I just described to you are assault weapons that are military-style and utilized by the military in times of war. The one that I was, uh, intensely trained on, the M16, and now the AR-15 in times of war. However, the AR-15 and many, many other assault weapons are available to be bought by anyone either in this county, this state, or this country. The, this is from a Times article from this past Sunday. The AR-15 is a weapon of choice for what has happened in this country through the many years. February 2018, AR-15, Parkland, 17 killed. November 2017, Southern Springs, Texas, 26 killed by AR-15. October 2017, Las Vegas, Nevada, 58 killed. December 2015, San Bernardino, California, 14 killed. December 2012, Newton, Connecticut, 27 killed. July 2012, Aurora, Colorado, 12 killed. Does this sound like the enemy to you? I don't think so. This was not Vietnam. This is not anywhere that our soldiers are going in today fighting in a war. These were enemy, these were people that were out either for a good time in our clubs or at a theater, or our children in school, where they should feel safe. I have one grandson left in high school that graduates this year, and one other one that's head of high school this year. I have a daughter that teaches school. I have a daughter-in-law that's head of the guidance department of a high school. And they are scared to death of what might happen in these schools. All because someone who may have a mental illness or just mad with the world will utilize an M15, I mean, AR-15. Now, there was one I didn't call. That was a Ponce nightclub. The AR-15 was not used there. The assault weapon that was used there was a SIG, S-I-G, Sawyer Max, which has at least 30 rounds within its chambers that it can be utilized in. This is a listing of all of the assault weapons that can be bought in this country. It's about 10 pages of assault weapons that can be bought freely in this country to be utilized. The vast majority of them are for killing the enemy. And the people that we just talked about, they're not the enemy. They're United States citizens, young people in school, those that are going out to have a good time, those that are worshiping their Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, in church, or whatever the case may be. So my question to you is, I'm not trying to take out, take anyone's right away, excuse me, to bear arms. The Second Amendment of this Constitution of the United States gives you that right. However, I think the founding fathers that wrote this constitution and had gave us the the Second Amendment as we went on and approving this had no idea that we were talking about assault weapons. I'm not trying to take away your right to have a handgun, a shotgun, or a rifle that someone came to my office the other day and said, I use that for hunting. I said, well, do you use an AR-15 or any assault weapon for hunting? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. Again, these weapons are used in war. I was trained intensely on the M, uh, uh, M16 when I was in basic training and knew how to use it. Thank the Lord I didn't go to Vietnam and have to use it. I think I've said enough about the assault weapons. And I think I've, I've said enough to the press, and everyone else knows where I'm going with this. So, I'm going to make a motion, and it could very well cost me in the long run. But if it does, it does. I had to make a stance. I had to come forth and say what was on my mind. And I held back too long. I probably should have said this a long time ago. My motion is to request that staff draft a proposed ordinance on banning assault weapon sales in Hillsborough County.
Okay, we have motion on the floor by Commissioner Miller on item F4. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
I have a second motion, Madam Chair.
I do have somebody in the queue. Do you want to, okay, Commissioner Miller, go ahead.
Well, since that motion did not get a second, I have a second motion. And I'd like to make a motion for this board to pass a resolution seeking the repeal of Section 790.33 Florida statute, which prohibits local regulation of firearms and ammunition. That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Miller. And if anybody wants it restated, we could do that. Is there a second for that motion? Motion dies for lack of a second. Okay. Now move on to F5. What's your pleasure? Commissioner White, are you ready? Okay.
There's a three-day waiting period outlined in, I think, the Florida statutes that counties can adopt to have, or someone goes to buy any type of weapon, there's a three-day waiting period for that to happen. Also, in the statutes, if I'm not wrong, Mr. Fletcher, counties could have the opportunity to increase that to five days. It might not sound like a lot, but additional two days may be able to indicate if a person has mental problems, or warrants on their arrest, any other thing of those matters that maybe prevent them from buying a weapon and utilizing that weapon in some of the census killings that we just talked about. So, my motion is to request staff to draft an ordinance increasing the waiting period for obtaining firearms from three days to five days.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Miller on item F5 to increase the waiting period for firearms from three days to five days. Is there a second? Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Higginbotham. And we'll now go into board discussion. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner Merman. Mr. Fletcher, what was the length of the waiting period in place in Broward County at the time that this unthinkable act was carried out?
So, Commissioner, the state constitution authorizes counties to have a waiting period from three to five days. Hillsborough County's is presently three. I don't know if we completed surveying all the counties that have this in place, but my understanding is Broward was, was five days.
And how long had that waiting period been in effect?
To the best of my knowledge, that's, their original enactment of the ordinance had a five-day, the five-day waiting period, which would date back to the 90s.
So, two decades. Approximately.
I believe it was the late 90s, so, so maybe, maybe close to that.
And as I said, this, this was an unthinkable act. Clearly, as we address these issues, solutions have to be comprehensive in nature. Clearly, a policy framework that called for a five-day waiting period, unfortunately, was ineffective in Broward County. For that reason, I'm not going to be able to support the motion on the floor. And in fact, I, I would make a motion to postpone the item indefinitely.
Okay, we have a subsidiary motion by Commissioner White that would postpone the item indefinitely, which in effect lays it on the table. It does need a second, and it is debatable. Is there a second?
Laying on the table is not debatable.
Yes, it is, sir. I have it right here.
The motion wasn't to lay on the table.
No, the postpone indefinitely, I said, which in a, has that effect. But it does postpone it indefinitely. And it does need a second, and it is debatable. So, is there a second for Commissioner White's motion? I'll pass the gavel and second his motion for discussion. Commissioner Higginbotham's in the queue.
I had problems with the original motion that Commissioner Miller brought forward. It disturbs me when I go to any place of worship. And I've been to, to your church, and to see armed security guards there, which in essence is no longer a gun-free zone. But I'm concerned about the Second Amendment and stepping over that, that boundary. I so respect and admire you, as you well know, especially, and I jokingly said this was kind of a Charles Bronson move today, because it could have, you know, serious consequences for you politically if the governor were to stand in, or step in. Your resolution made me squirm and wiggle, because it would be sending that message. But in this atmosphere where Tallahassee is bearing down on us for local rights and taking our local authority away from us, I don't want to get crossways with them. And for that reason, I didn't second and would not have supported it. I see no problem with increasing from three to five days, although Commissioner White did point out that it didn't make a difference in South Florida. But it's better than, than voting everything down today. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Commissioner Merman?
Thank you. Yes, it was a terrible unthinkable act, and most of you know I've spent my life working to help protect children in our community. I just, I, my question is, is the legislature, what is the legislature doing? And I, I think I worry about taking actions today because they are not done with their work up there, and it may void everything, you know, we've done here. So, and the other issue I have is, we don't have a full board here. These are really sensitive, important issues that need every single one of our members' attention. So, I guess, could you answer the question about the legislature and tell me what you think is going on?
So, this...
I thought they had acted on this particular item.
So, with this particular issue, the, the waiting period from three days to five days, that's in the state constitution, so that's beyond the authority of the legislature to curtail, curtail that authority. So, we, we do have the legal authority to do that. In terms of what the legislature has done, or is in the process of doing in Tallahassee, I'd want to defer to Brandon Wagner. He's more up to speed than I am on the pending legislation. I'm not that familiar with it.
I think, though, that the legislature can take it up to five days statewide, right?
They could do any of the things we're, we're talking about, and more.
Okay. I got you. So, Brandon, could you report?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Brandon Wagner, Operations and Legislative Affairs Officer. Currently, the House is debating the final version of 7026, which is the, the gun bill. They're on third reading. They went through a series of amendments, both in the Senate and the House yesterday. The current iteration of the bill calls for a three-day waiting period for the purchase of all firearms, and that's the current metric they're using.
Okay, but they're not done. It could change.
They are not done. They are in debate at this time.
Okay. You know, I'm, I'm really torn on this particular issue, so I'm going to wait to hear more comment. I think going an extra two days is not a problem, but I do, I think the fact that a couple of our Commissioners are not here, and the fact that the legislature is not done with their work, that's why I supported the motion to postpone indefinitely. As you know, that does not, only what it does here, it means we can't vote on it here. But our rules allow us to bring the stuff up every single meeting. Commissioner Miller could continue to bring this item back every meeting if he wanted. So, I, I just want to kind of clarify for the public where we're at process-wise on this issue. So, I'll just wait and hear some more public comment, and Commissioner Miller's in the queue. Commissioner Miller's.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. The argument that two Commissioners are not here is very weak. We've done and passed many, many ordinances and other things in this, in this body, when only four Commissioners were here, to say that because two Commissioners are here, we shouldn't take this forward is very, very weak. Secondly, Commissioner Merman, Commissioner Chris served in the Florida Legislature. There are three, two and a half days left in the Florida Legislature. And we all know that more than likely, they're not going to pick up or make an addition decision on increasing it to five days. The Constitution of the State of Florida gives this county the right to increase it from three to five days. We all know that if the legislature goes back in a special session, if they're going to bring this back up again, it has to be in the call. And we know more than likely, that call is going to be limited, more than likely to the budget, unless there's something put in the budget, and more than likely, we'll talk about guns. So, the arguments that came forth about the legislature and having two Commissioners not here is very weak. The Constitution of the State of Florida gives us the right as a county to increase that to five days, the waiting period to five days. The argument about what happened in Broward County, please, come on.
Anybody in the queue?
No.
I'm one to speak, so do I need to pass you the gavel back?
No, no, you speak. You're Chair.
There's probably no one more closer to this issue than myself. When I was a child, I was in this situation. I was living in the Middle East with my parents, and I would have to go to school with armed soldiers every day. I would enter a school with armed soldiers every day. I came home one day and witnessed my father cut another man's throat with his own knife, who had broken into the compound, gotten past the armed soldiers, and tried to assassinate my father. I'm here getting chills, listening to the conversation, remembering back to what I saw when I was six. My father, who's recently deceased, was probably the most skillful combat soldier you would ever think of ever meeting. Skillful in every way, even at the age of 95. Bad people are everywhere, Commissioner Miller, everywhere. And if we disarm the good people, then we can't defend ourselves with the bad people. And bad people will always find a way to find a weapon to kill good people. And that's my fear. Yesterday, I faced that fear again, right here in Tampa. I dropped my five, almost six-year-old daughter off at school, and there were armed guards there. The Academy of Holy Names, of all places. Yes, they had fired a staff person who threatened to come back and shoot up the school. So, they had to bring in Tampa Police Department and private security and arm all entrances and exits to the school yesterday. And I had to drop my daughter off in that environment. Thank God the school fought quickly and provided the security necessary. But it, as a parent, scared the heck out of me. This is a very perplexing debate. I clearly see both sides of this argument. We want to take the guns out of the hands of those who would abuse the privilege of owning and using one. But do we also want to take the guns out of the hands of law-abiding citizens that need to protect themselves? And that's the debate that's been going on for years. And you and I in the legislature know that. Earlier, a man said that there was a behavioral issue. Well, it's a mental health issue, quite frankly, and something I think we keep sweeping under the rug, and one that we need to clearly focus on, on investing in. Today, I don't think your request for extending the waiting period is unreasonable, and I would be willing to support that. It's provided for already in our state constitution, and it's within our jurisdiction to be able to do so. And I clearly understand what you're doing, is you're trying to put whatever foot we have forward, forward, and I appreciate that on behalf of my daughter. At the age of six, I had to learn what a firearm was, and that it wasn't a toy. Why? Because we needed it to protect ourselves against bad people. In the event somebody broke into our compound, the last person that would be suspected of acquiring a firearm is the six-year-old. And it may be the only person that could get the weapon safely to an adult. Dad and I had a code word and a code signal. And if ever given that code signal or code word, I had to get him that weapon. But he had to leave it loaded in the house, and I had to know that it was not a toy. So, at a very early age, I learned that. Parents need to teach their children respect. They need to teach them that these are not toys. And they need to keep them safely secured so that children don't access them. But, you know, this is a very, 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 very tricky issue. It is not clear-cut, black and white. It is not divided on party lines like people think. In the legislature, I sat next to two very, very, very loyal Democrats that came from central Florida. One of them became chairman of the Democratic Party, and they were both ardent supporters of keeping law-abiding citizens armed to protect themselves against the criminals who will always find a way to find a weapon of destruction. So, it's not a partisan issue.
Any more debate? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor by Senator, or Commissioner Miller. The clerk will open the board. Seconded by Commissioner Higginbotham.
Yeah, you're on the motion to postpone indefinitely.
Okay, we're on the motion to postpone indefinitely, made by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Merman. Board will be opened, and we'll vote.
Motion failed three to do. Commissioners Chris, Higginbotham, and Miller voted no.
Okay, now we're back on the motion that made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Higginbotham. Seeing no more debate, the board will be open for a vote.
Motion carried four to one. Commissioner White voted no.
Thank you all. Okay. Commissioner Miller, next item.
I wasn't going to bring this up, but I thought I better bring it up. But in 1997, Commissioner Chris was in Tallahassee. I think Commissioner Merman was there. Let me back up one minute. In no way am I trying in any of my efforts to take anyone's rights away to bear arms. Understand that. The Constitution of this United States says you can bear arms, gun, handgun, shotgun, rifle. I don't think anywhere in that it dictates that someone should bear an assault weapon. So, please understand, Les Miller, Leslie James Miller Jr., the son of Shannon Leslie Miller Sr., never said that, never, okay? Let me refer back to 1997, the last day of college classes in Tallahassee. I get a call at 12:30 in the morning that my son had been shot. Shot with four other people. I didn't even know my way to the hospital in Tallahassee. My car found a way there. I got there, and there were young people standing around, because this was a college dance. My son is also my fraternity brother, Cap Alpha Psi, and he had been shot by some two people that came from Annapolis, Georgia, that was not even college students, went to the stands, started a ruckus, decided to pull out a gun and shoot. That night, the doctors told me that my son had a 50/50 chance of surviving. Three operations later, 18 days later, he was discharged from the hospital. The pain and agony that I went through at that particular point in time was hard on me and my family. But I have no idea of what the people in Parkland, those who lost their children, feel. I know what I felt, but I didn't lose him. He didn't die. He came close. There's 17 people in Parkland to die. The numbers you also saw in Newton, in Las Vegas, and all the others, I don't know what they feel. they feel. I can think about it, I can come close to it, but I don't know. As I said before, I have grandchildren. Maybe one day I have great-grandchildren. Right now, I have two in public school. I have a daughter that teaches public school, and I have a daughter-in-law that works as the head of the guidance department in public schools. Children and teachers are afraid to go to school. Why in the world are we today having our children afraid to go to school and teachers afraid to go to school? And if somebody in Tallahassee comes up with this crazy, off-the-wall idea to give teachers guns, are you kidding me? Are you kidding, they're educators. They're not military folks, they're not police officers. I've said enough. My motion on F6, I'm going to change it a little bit. It says, "Request staff to draft an ordinance to make it a misdemeanor for anyone that makes a threat on social media or otherwise against a Hillsborough County school or any daycare within Hillsborough County." That's my motion.
Okay, I don't see any speakers. I do, I want to ask you, Commissioner Miller, because I think this is an issue that extends beyond schools. I think it's an issue that goes to government facilities in general, City Hall, the county center. I think it's, I think this is a much broader issue than just, you know, threats on social media that exist in the schools. And I really, I would like to pass the gavel. There was a motion by Commissioner Miller, there was a second one by Commissioner Higginbotham. I'd like to make a substitute motion that we request staff to study the issue, meet with law enforcement, the state attorney, and the chief judge of the courts, and make a recommendation to us on any policies revolving, you know, misdemeanors, felonies, or whatever it is, on people that make a threat on social media or otherwise against any Hillsborough County employee, school employee, public, I mean, it just needs to be much broader. And I think it, I would like to support it, but I'd like to see it more encompassing and not just for the schools, though I see the impact it could have on that. But I just want to, I want to see a much broader issue, and so that's my substitute motion.
Okay, we have a substitute motion. Is there a second?
Okay, motion dies for lack of a second.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay.
Pass the gavel back.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, Commissioner Merman. You're thinking like I'm thinking on this issue. For me, the devil's going to be in the details, you know? How do we define a threat? You know, at what point is that threshold met, so on and so forth? But I'm going to go ahead and support Commissioner Miller's motion on the floor because we'll have an opportunity to, you know, to see a draft that'll come to the board and allow us to consider some of the issues that we may have questions about. Of course, that'll trigger a public hearing and allow us to hear from the public as well. And I don't see anything wrong with directing the county attorney's office to go ahead and engage the stakeholders that were mentioned, like law enforcement and like the state attorney's office, to find out if they're going to have any, anything that they would recommend that be incorporated, or on the flip side, not incorporated into the ordinance. And they can also share with us any concerns that they might have about ultimately implementing and enforcing the ordinance. So would that be something you would, you would conduct in the process of drafting this?
Yes, sir. In the course of our drafting process, where there's a law enforcement aspect to it, we would typically reach out, at least to the sheriff's office, and in this case, we can reach out to the broader community as well as you articulated.
So I'm with you, Commissioner Merman. For me, the devil's going to be in the details with the final draft, but I'm going to go ahead and support the motion on the floor and get something in front of this board.
Right, and I am very supportive of this. And just to tell everybody what the process is of what we're doing today, our votes are not approving these items. They are approving it to go to the next step for staff and our county attorney to draft these issues. They do come back to this board. It may go through further changes, we don't know, and then it does go to a public hearing. So just to know that there are several steps that have to take place, and, you know, we're open to the public. I think that's the issue, is that we want to hear from the public on a lot of these issues also. But no, I'll, that, I was going to make that comment, and I will support the item because I think it's a good first start on this whole issue of threats on social media against any, any public official, any school official. I just think what's going on today is, is really unthinkable, almost, that people are free to say, it is their First Amendment right, but they are free to say, and sometimes in not very positive ways, anything about anybody. So with that, we have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Higginbotham on item F6. I see no further discussion, so please record your vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Crist, do you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to make a motion as well. You know, for 16 years in the legislature, I was the lead on justice, and some of the legislation I worked for over a decade to pass was things like 1020 Life and the Violent Felony Offender Act. While acts committed with a firearm fall within the guidelines of both of those pieces of legislation, the one thing that wasn't done that I think should be done here is I think the legislature should move forward and make a gun crime at a school, or let's say, a killing of a, at a school, an automatic capital offense, and taking out any option of a life sentence, so that anyone anticipating going into a school and having a shootout knows right up front that it is a capital offense. So I'd like to do a resolution asking the county attorney to draft a resolution for our consideration that requests or recommends to the legislature that they consider raising the penalty to an automatic capital offense for any killing at a school.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Crist, seconded by Commissioner White. You understand session's probably going to end, though they're talking about special sessions.
Well, puts us first up for next session or special session.
First up for next year, okay. Just want to make sure. Okay, very good. So we have a motion on the floor. And would you repeat the motion, just so everybody's clear?
The motion is directing the county attorney to draft a resolution for our consideration that would ask the legislature to consider raising the penalty for a gun-related killing at a school to an automatic capital offense, or a mandatory capital offense.
Okay, and seconded by Commissioner White. Commissioner White, you recognize?
I'm going to make a motion to amend and just say a school killing, period.
Fine. That's a friendly amendment.
Is that it? Do you want to give that a second?
No.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have amendment two, Commissioner Crist's motion, seconded by Commissioner Crist. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Amendment carried five to zero.
And we are now on the motion as amended by Commissioner Crist, seconded by Commissioner White. Is there any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Excuse me, please record your votes. Motion carried five to zero.
Okay, thank you. And I do want to say, Commissioner Miller, you know, I've known you a long time, and your passion and concern for safety has always been paramount, and I appreciate your work on this, and, you know, I just, I hope that the residents of Hillsborough County feel that we're doing everything we can to keep them safe. Okay, Mr. Merman.
All right, Commissioners, we have three items left on your regular agenda, two procurement items, B1 and B2.
Good morning, Scott Storm Procurement Services. Item B1 is asking the board to award and execute an agreement with the lowest response for responsible bidder, Miller Pipeline LLC, in the amount of $2,766,651.50 for rehabilitation of existing gravity sewer pipe for the Public Utilities Department. Due to limited subcontracting opportunities, the Disadvantage Business Enterprise Goal Setting Committee did not establish a participation goal for this particular work. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you for your explanation. I see no discussion, board action on item B1. Motion by Commissioner Higginbotham, seconded by Commissioner White. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
Next item.
Excuse me. Item B2 is asking the board to approve an increase to a contract purchase agreement with SHI International Corporation, the amount of $1,476,382.2 to bring the total to $5,355,382.2 for additional ongoing and as-needed purchases of Microsoft software licenses, maintenance, and support for departments and participating agencies throughout the county as part of an existing three-year Microsoft enterprise and enrollment agreement using an available state-of-Florida term contract. Requested increase is required due to the need for additional Microsoft products, services, and software licenses to support day-to-day operations throughout the county. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. I see no discussion or debate. Commissioner Higginbotham made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Crist on item B2. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp did have an item scheduled today. I don't have any instructions from her office, so I suppose just for purposes of procedure, we should defer it.
Yes, I was going to do that. Okay, I have a motion to defer item F1.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Crist. Please record your vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
And that just leaves the last item, G1.
Turn your mic on. There you go.
Tom Fessler, Management and Budget Department. Item G1 is a report on the status of the reserve for contingencies in the general funds. I'm required to bring this item back to you whenever there's a change from the previous meeting of more than $100,000 since the last meeting. The change that occurred was the board took a vote to accelerate the strategic property partners' infrastructure reimbursements. Therefore, the reserve for contingency in the countywide general fund was reduced by $3.7 million. The balances in the reserve for contingency funds and each of the general funds are in the countywide fund, $79.6 million, in the unincorporated area fund, $14.0 million, and in the library district fund, $18.5 million.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Higginbotham, seconded by Commissioner White. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
And lastly, any future items that you may have?
One, and we also have to finish public comment.
Oh, yes, right.
We, I do have one. During the hurricane, my office received quite a few phone calls about Bob's barricades and things in the road that could potentially be like missiles. And so I guess I'd just like to ask that when you guys are doing your hurricane preparedness, that you review the public's worst, I guess, their policies on preparations. Do they go and take these barricades down? You know, what should they do? Because we need to be careful, you know, we have liability on that, obviously. And I think we have to watch that really carefully to see what's out in the field on the roads.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Mm-hmm, yep.
And then we have to finish our public comment, and we have four speakers left. Lois Price, Char Lurch, Anthony White, and Sidney Eastman. And Lois, you're next.
Thank you, and good morning.
Sure, thank you.
I'm Lois Price, and I'm on the Board of Hope. Everyone deserves a decent place to call home, but in this county, families and entire communities are suffering. Families are dislocated to chase affordable rent. The fabric of the family is stressed. Children struggle in school as they have to move from place to place. Health problems abound. Aging adults are denied comfort and security in vulnerable years, and this affects us all. Cost burdened families are on the verge of homelessness. There are more than 122,000 extremely low-income people who are at risk for homelessness, and of those, more than 29,000 are children under the age of 17. We found that the primary cause of homelessness in Hillsborough County is the inability to afford a place to live, and the fact that the current, or the fact that the current residence is unsafe or unstable. Cost burdened families live on the verge of homelessness, and that forces them to rely on city and county social services that are already really strained. We see this in eviction statistics. From 2008 to 2014, the number of evictions reported to the clerk of the court increased every year by 10,000 to 13,000. The Tampa Housing Authority currently provides housing to over 13,000 low-income and working families in Tampa and Hillsborough County, but 19,500 families sit on the waitlist for public housing and voucher programs. This Section 8 waitlist has been closed since 2010. It won't open for years. The current level of investment in affordable housing cannot tackle our housing crisis and meet our basic housing needs. We need your leadership to tackle these problems. We need serious investment in housing. And Reverend White, who is scheduled to speak next but had to leave, asked me to, asked you to prioritize joining 1,600 residents of Hillsborough County on Monday, April 16th, at 7:00 PM at the Bible-based Fellowship Church in Carrollwood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Char Lurch. Okay, thank you. Anthony White and Sidney Eastman. Okay, and that concludes public comment, and that concludes our agenda, and we will stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.